Yes.
Hello, man, how are you?
Good.
Sorry.
Is that you talking to Rob?
Yeah.
I want to talk to the...
It's really amazing.
Yes.
John said.
How's it going?
Two on their ground.
Hey.
You're sorry.
Yes.
What was the response by Congress?
It was the next question we have to discuss.
You have to decide if you think it's on Earth.
Or that's sick.
Well, there's no changes to this change in state.
The easier connection is the better connection.
Nope, no changes.
Even if they go to the fight, it would be different.
That's what the news said we had, but it didn't.
Perfectly fine, just waiting and go to bed after.
I think that's what I thought. I think they just took an idea and just stuck it in the bed. It's done. That's why it's all going down. We're going to say.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a issue with the key on my phone.
Yeah.
It was really amazing.
Yes.
Well, Johnson.
How's it going?
Two on their ground. Yes. Which Milford? Which Milford? And Rakers?
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the January 24th Board of Supervisors meeting. We're going to start the meeting tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you please rise.
We have a couple announcements tonight. The first is that I want everybody to be aware that this meeting may be audio and video recorded by third parties, and our township manager would also like to make an announcement.
Hi, it's Madam Chair. Tonight's rescheduled meeting was advertised in the January 18th, 2024 edition of the Daily Local News as well as posted on the Township website. We do not have the proof of publication yet, but I do have a printout of the advertisement as a ranking of the Daily Local.
All right, thank you, Chris, and I appreciate everybody rearranging their schedules to be with us tonight due to the weather last week, so we appreciate that. We're going to start with, or we're going to move on to Agenda Item Number Three for a public comment. If anybody in attendance has a comment regarding something that is not on tonight's agenda, you may raise your hand and step up to the podium. Ms. Swart.
Yes.
Hello, good evening. Good to see you all. Happy New Year. I like to start off every January with repeated requests. This is the ninth January in a row that I have requested the Board consider and appoint a citizen budget or oversight committee, so I just want that certainly to be reflected in the minutes. And I just wanted to just point out something. Chris and Nate, I've saved all of these since, I don't know, 2013 or 14, so I'm just not holding on to this. I have every ones because I like to see what they, what they promise they're going to do and what they actually do. But, you know, since this board and staff, I don't know who is so resistant about having citizens oversight or citizens oversee expenditures, but, you know, our political parties spend money on electing auditors and they don't audit. In fact, the newly elected auditor says he is committed to ensuring that West Ocean Finances are managed with efficiency, compliance, and transparency. Well, all you all know, the auditors meet once a year for 15 minutes and that's it, so why wouldn't we have this gentleman and the other two auditors make up a citizens' budget committee or an oversight committee or an audit committee of the bills? So, just trying to take a different angle. I think the auditors actually having responsibilities just makes common democratic sense. They're elected officials, they should do something for us. Another thing, I had requested a copy of the grant application, the approximate $1 million, and it's for the appraised value, the home that the township would like to purchase in the amount of $828,000. The property owner bought the property in 2018 for $527,000. But what concerns me is this residential appraisal report says the drainage is adequate, and it also says there are no apparent site hazards. Now, that's completely different than what the board had suggested in requesting this grant. I saw the pictures. I mean, it seems like the board is more accurate than this appraisal report. There's what appears to be drainage issues, and we all, it's been communicated that there are definitely site hazards. So, I think the acquisition price of this property needs to be adjusted and the grant application needs to be amended to reflect that there are hazards and the drainage is not adequate. That's it for now. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Margie. Yes, Mr. Wong.
Happy New Year, everyone. I want to second Margie's proposed citizen budget review committee. Something that I observed this year was when the township posted publicly before they approve it, it is a, it is a fraction of the information that is covered in these meetings. The first eight pages of the final report, the final budget, the summary pages, they're not published to the public for their review. The in-depth, line-by-line budget items, I don't believe are published for the public to review, so even somebody who doesn't come to these meetings on a regular basis or wants information about the budget will not see it with what is published before, before it's approved. So, I do think people like Margie who go through it line by line, have good comments, they want to be good citizens, I think a citizens' group to review the budget led by the township supervisors is probably a good idea. It gives somebody a chance to come in and look at the full depth of the information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wong. Yes, Doug.
Good evening, everyone. Doug White, West Ocean Township resident. I'd like the Board to consider pushing or advocating for Mr. Pele and our other state rep, Christine Sappi, I believe, to have it so that our police can enforce the motor vehicle code on private property. Being on the Planning Commission, there's a lot of talk about traffic, how traffic is controlled in these various land developments, but because it's private property, we can't enforce anything. You can put all the stop signs you want, they're not enforceable. So, I'd like to see letters being written. They have to come from the state to allow our police to enforce the motor vehicle code on private property, commercial of at least a minimum certain size to make it practical. And that's the first thing. And also, I think we should advocate our state reps to push for legislation to allow the use of radar by our local police. It's been frowned upon because they thought it'd be misuse, but there's a lot of speeding and impacts wildlife in our township. When the speed limit's 25, please do 25. Be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Last call for public comment. Anybody else? No? All right. Thank you for those comments. We'll move on to item number four, which is very exciting, with the appointment of Shelby Smith as our new zoning officer. You can see her sitting right up here. Welcome to the township, Shelby. Chris, would you like to give a little background?
Hi, it's Madam Chair. So, before the Board this evening is consideration of the appointment of Shelby Smith as the zoning officer of West Ocean Township. I will note this is actually not her first public meeting. She got to enjoy the zoning hearing board meeting on Monday night. Ms. Smith has worked in municipal government for nearly 10 years and is coming to us from Jenkins Town Borough in Montgomery County. She's worked in a variety of facets of local government, including general administration, building and zoning, and finance. She is a certified zoning official and holds a license as a building code official, along with her educational work background covering a wide range of topics pertinent to the position. I believe she will be a welcome addition to our codes department and the township's team, and she started with us on January 16th.
Great. Well, welcome, Shelby. Is there any board discussion, comments, questions?
Just say well.
Just say well. Is there a, we need to make a motion to approve?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. Is there a motion to appoint Ms. Shelby Smith as a zoning officer?
Amen.
Thanks, John. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
All right, thanks, Tina. Is there any public comment or questions on this motion? No? You're in, then? All right. Call the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. Welcome, Shelby.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item number five, which is a discussion and possible approval of Resolution Number Six dash 2024, granting conditional final land development approval for the redevelopment of 943 South High Street with an assisted living facility and mini warehouse self-storage facility by Branchport Capital LLC.
Madam Chair, I would like to note for the Board that one of the items that was discussed back in December was the landscaping plan related to review by the SAC. The SAC did meet and discuss the landscaping plan at their meeting last night, and I did provide some comments and bring out that in front of the Board this evening.
All right, thanks, Chris. Yep, we have it right up here. Thank you for attending that meeting last night, by the way, with the SAC. That was great. So, I will turn it over to you.
Hi, my name is Gina Gerber. I'm attorney with Brian the Right for Call of Cogga. I'm here on behalf of the applicant this evening. I'm not going to bore you with too many details because I think the board is very familiar with this property at this point in time. It's the existing Quality Inn, it's 943 High Street. The applicant is proposing to redevelop this property with an assisted living facility and a self-storage facility. It's gone through multiple reviews from your township's consultants. I think we're at a point now where everything is kind of tied up in a boat and ready to go. We do have our development team here with us this evening. If there are any outstanding questions or comments that the board may have, we're happy to discuss through any of the finer points associated with this, but we are seeking approval for a preliminary final land development for this property this evening. Just to give you a little background, you may recall this did go through conditional use to allow for these uses on the property. There were some conditions in place that are still in place that will need to be satisfied and ever to move forward with the land development here. The Planning Commission has made a recommendation of approval on this as of December, such as to a couple of conditions that we are happy to comply. So, with that, I'm going to ask the Board if there are any questions or comments or things we would like to discuss.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions by the Board?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
It's just really a follow-up to something that's been out there for some time, which I believe is now in progress. So, it's been a longstanding Pendot initiative to look at this Route 202 northbound lane on 202, onto the bypass there. And I know that the residents along High Street recently got notification of a survey or interest in this particular project that Pendot's working on. And I'm wondering if the property owner of the Quality Inn has received a similar notification and if that's been made available to the branch board, and are they aware of it, and has there been any indication of a need as part of this assessment for, let's see what it says here, preliminary engineering and environmental studies for this project have begun. We recommend that the applicant contact Pendot to determine if any additional right-of-way would be required for the project. So, I just wonder if there's any status update on that.
Sam or Steve, do I have any other concerns to that? I love her so much.
We can touch upon that. On behalf of the applicant, our traffic engineer, Taylor, traffic planning and design approached Pendot about their plans. There was nothing that was indicated that any expansion would be property inbound. It most likely would be outbound, that is to say, the whole of the right-of-way. Now, the projections are 10 years down the road. There's no indication at this point that any additional right-of-way would be required. I don't know, Sam, Sam Parentini's here. I don't know if we received any notification. I have not received any notifications that you referenced that other residents within West Town or West Ocean have received.
No, that's consistent. And from Matt Hammond, who represents us on the traffic side, he's the one that has spoken directly with Pendot and has, and it's consistent with what Steve just said. There's nothing expected to stand, along standard gist on the brand, and it shouldn't affect the right-of-way, but it's much further.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? I just had a couple of quick questions. Looking at the McCormick-Taylor letter that we received up in our packet, there were a few things that were pointed out. One of them is providing a larger loading area or larger parking spaces for the self-storage facility. Do you want to, I mean, there's a couple here, so I want to give you a chance to answer each one individually.
I can touch on that specific one. Our design is per de ordinance, that is to say, that all parking spaces associated and it's specific to the self-storage. That's our parking area and loading area, specific to self-storage. Those spaces are standard spaces. The loading area is oversized, quite frankly, relative to the ordinance requirement, so I don't know exactly where McCormick-Taylor's data is coming from, but our architect, who's laid out the plan, we've been in touch with potential users, and there's nothing to lead us to believe that we need oversized spaces, more oversized loading area beyond that which we showed.
Where is the loading area? Can you just point to it?
Loading area, come up the drive aisle. The loading area leads to the cupboard entrance here.
There's also a note that it should be marked. Is it supposed to be marked as a loading area?
We currently do not have signage that identifies that. We could certainly add. Our thought was that as the facility grows, it becomes apparent to those users and also extended by management as to facilitate loading individual parking.
Okay. I mean, I think that, yeah, if you want to put a sign or I don't know, it'll be pavement markings indicating that it's a loading area that might be good.
Yeah, there was, there was nothing, you know, specific to the fire marshal's review to identify, you know, no parking, loading area that we could respond to, but we, we can incorporate that loading area, as well as the loading area specific to the assisted living facility, which is this area right here.
Yeah, exactly. That'd be good, yeah. The second question that I have is, and I don't know if this was mentioned earlier, but I can't recall, is there a staff, is there a staffed office at the storage facility? Is there going to be somebody working there at all times?
It will be manned, correct.
Okay.
And that's 24/7? It's going to be manned?
No, it depends on the business hours. It depends anywhere between 7:00 and 9:00, depending on the start, to 8:00.
Okay. They can access the facility, the self-storage facility 24 hours a day?
No, I think it would be very limited access actually to 7:00 PM.
Okay.
But it would be cut off at another minute.
So, the question here, also by McCormick-Taylor, is how are drivers who don't already have a rental unit going to get beyond the gate to speak with somebody or access?
We imagine first the inquiry would be through phone, internet access. Again, reasonable course of business hours would be 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. You could be, I would imagine, we don't have that worked out fully, but we suspect that the gate, which is in advance of the facility, will be remotely opened by the individual manning, the facility itself, and allow for access during business hours.
Okay.
And it's likely to be open during business hours.
The gate?
The gate will be open during business hours.
Okay.
And then there's obviously also the doors are off business hours. All those doors are just all keyed, either with their phone app or they keep that and access.
Right. After, yeah, okay. And my last question is about the ADA compliant curb ramps.
We've updated the plan to identify the particular types of ramps. There's various types of, based upon Pendot's standard application, and we've identified those on the plans as well as reference the Pendot publication for those layout.
Okay. I have one question. Yep. The, one of the rules is there can't have any outdoor storage hazardous material, including flammable liquids, fireworks, in the self-storage facility. How's that going to be enforced?
That's part of the lease or the rental agreement.
Okay.
And obviously, you know, should, employees are going to manage move-ins, so there's some visual inspections as people move in, but should there anything be identified, it would be terminated and they have to make a disturbance. Sub storage.
Okay, so you're relying on that to, on our system, so to speak, to make sure?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, you know, it's a practicality thing. I don't know that you can have every box or every piece of furniture open when it's being moved in, but there'd be no outdoor storage and hazardous materials are listed as prohibited.
Is there going to be any signs inside the facility listing the hazardous materials here are not going to be allowed, just as a reminder to people? I just wonder if, a lot of people don't read leases.
I'm sure, I'm sure there is, but let me, I'll get back to you on that one, because I can talk to the operating company and see what they're, what they're going to put on the walls.
Yeah, just to pose as a reminder that hazardous materials are not allowed. Most people don't read leases.
Absolutely. It's a good point. We'll note it, and I'll get back to you with that.
Thank you. And one last point, again, about the landscaping. So, you two were great enough to come to our SAC meeting last night where you discussed with some of the members options for landscaping, especially in that buffer area that we talked about, and I know that you were amenable to bullet point number two and number four on that list that was provided to you, and we really appreciate you working with us on that. As far as next steps about how we work that out, I'm not really familiar with how that's going to be forward.
Yeah, if you, if you recall, I asked Mr. Bakeshore that same exact question. I think that's being worked out, but possibly it gives us some guidance on how to resolve it.
So, it would be the, it would amend the plan in accordance with the recommendations from the SAC as discussed last night, and then they would be reviewed by Brian to ensure compliance prior to recording of the final plans with the county. So, once Brian reviews them and says that they've met all those requirements, then he would issue a letter authorizing them to be recorded.
Okay.
Is that correct, Brian?
Yes, Chris, there is a, conditions in the resolution tonight. They have to meet all those conditions before they can record.
And I can jump in. I mean, paragraph six specifically says of the proposed resolution, the applicant must obtain recommendations from the Sustainability Committee on the landscaping plan, the types of trees and shrubs, and the applicant shall implement the recommendations, so we can revise that to be specific if this email is what is being required.
I would like to interject on that, based upon our discussions last night. There were some eight bullet points in that memo, and we touched upon all them during the meeting, two of which we were agreeable to. I'm going to say the balance of six were somewhat subjective items that will, will locate the, one item specifically is, you know, it's going to be a push within the municipality to make 70% of all speeches native versus non-native. We're at about 50% now, so it's a little difficult to achieve that which isn't written as a standard. But I do intend to respond, as I said in the meeting last night, to every bullet point through a response letter. Generally speaking, we're agreeable to the two bullet points and obviously the one specific to the perimeter buffering, to which I believe the conditional use caused us to meet with the SAC.
Well, can I suggest something, and after you do your response to the email letter from the SAC, can we have that as part of the conditional agreement, the response back?
I mean, I don't, I'm not comfortable with this where we are because I don't know what to put as specific. I mean, the way it's worded now, it's that whatever they recommend, you're going to implement, so if that's not the case, which I understand, then we need to figure out a mechanism of them going back to the SAC and getting the SAC. It's ultimately the Board's decision, right? The SAC's a recommending body, so it's ultimately the Board to decide whether you want them to implement all of the SAC's recommendations, but I would say that if these are not all ordinance-driven or required by ordinance, then you really can't impose that as a condition. That's lawful. So, there's a little bit of a give and take, so, and I don't, obviously just seeing this for the first time, I can't comment on whether these are ordinance-driven or not, so I guess I'll think about it for a little bit. Sorry for the delay.
I attended the SAC meeting last night. I'll allow Ms. Gagne or Ms. Smith to correct me if I'm wrong. I'd say the SAC was generally amenable to a lot of what they were proposing last night on their plan, and I think it was Mr. Delone on the SAC that noted that while 70% is a goal of the SAC's in terms of need, is they were happy that they were at 50% and like willing to go a little bit above that threshold to address their concerns. Would you say that's inaccurate?
Yeah, and they also said that 100% was not achievable, nor did they expect that, so I agree.
Yeah, no, I mean, this list was created by members of the SAC. They, I don't think it has anything, they didn't look at ordinance, they, these are just kind of their ideas. Yeah. So, it's not ordinance-driven, and we appreciate that you're willing to work with those subtleties, bullet points. I think that's really great, so.
Appreciate that.
Could this be worked out during the, you know, the subsequent land development process?
This is the thing.
No, I mean, this is your approval of the plan, so unless we identify specifically
what they need to do, I don't know. I mean, Brian needs direction when he gets the revised plan to say, do their review not comply with this condition? So, if it's not that they have to do all of these eight bullet points, what is it then? Is it that there's two of these and they can agree?
Yes.
That the Board's okay with them implementing just those two?
Yes.
Okay. So, we have to remember which two those are?
Sure, sure. It's the second bullet point, I think, is that...
Okay. The place listed by Burniams, which are all non-native with natives, like black coal and arrow wood.
Correct. And the fourth, specific to the CUSA.
Okay. So, we could revise, condition six to read, applicant shall revise the landscape plan to address bullet points two and four in...
Yeah, if you recall, I asked Mr. Bakeshore that same exact question. I think that's being worked out, but possibly it gives us some guidance on how to resolve it.
So it would be, it would amend the plan in accordance with the recommendations from the SAC as discussed last night. And then they would be reviewed by Brian to ensure compliance prior to recording of the final plans with the county. So once Brian reviews them and says that they've met all those requirements, then he would issue a letter authorizing them to be recorded.
Okay.
Is that correct, Brian?
Yes, Chris, there is a conditions in the resolution tonight. They have to meet all those conditions before they can record it.
And I can jump in. I mean, paragraph six specifically says of the proposed resolution, the applicant must obtain recommendations from the sustainability committee on the landscaping plan, the types of trees and shrubs, and an applicant shall implement the recommendations. So we can revise that to be specific if this email is what is being required.
I would like to interject on that. Based upon our discussions last night, there were some eight bullet points in that memo. We touched upon all them during the meeting, but two of which we were agreeable to. I'm going to say the balance of six were somewhat subjective items that will locate the, one item specifically is, you know, it's going to be a push within the municipality to make 70% of all species native versus non-native. We're at about 50% now, so it's a little difficult to achieve that which isn't written as a standard. But I do intend to respond, as I said in the meeting last night, to every bullet point through a response letter. Generally speaking, we're agreeable to the two bullet points and obviously the one specific to the perimeter buffering, to which I believe the conditional use caused us to meet with the SAC.
Well, can I suggest something? And after you do your response to the email letter from the SAC, can we have that as part of the conditional agreement, the response back?
I mean, I don't, I'm not comfortable with this where we are because I don't know what to put as specific. I mean, the way it's worded now, it's that whatever they recommend, you're going to implement. So if that's not the case, which I understand, then we need to figure out a mechanism of them going back to the SAC and getting the SAC. It's ultimately the board's decision, right? The SAC is a recommending body, so it's ultimately the board to decide whether you want them to implement all of the SAC's recommendations. But I would say that if these are not all ordinance-driven or required by ordinance, then you really can't impose that as a condition. That's lawful. So there's a little bit of a give and take. So, and I don't, obviously just seeing this for the first time, I can't comment on whether these are ordinance-driven or not. So I guess let me think about it for a little bit.
I will.
Sorry, but you're not responding.
I attended the SAC meeting last night. I'll allow Ms. Gagne or Ms. Smith to correct me if I'm wrong. I'd say the SAC was generally amenable to a lot of what they were proposing last night on their plan. And I think it was Mr. Delone on the SAC that noted that while 70% is a goal of the SAC's in terms of needs, they were happy that they were at 50% and like willing to go a little bit above that threshold to address their concerns. Would you say that's accurate?
Yeah, and they also said that 100% was not achievable, nor did they expect that, so I agree.
Yeah, no, I mean, this list was created by members of the SAC. They, I don't think it has anything, they didn't look at ordinance. They, these are just kind of their ideas.
Yeah.
So it's not ordinance-driven, and we appreciate that you're willing to work with us on to these bullet points. I think that's really great, so.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Could this be worked out during the, you know, the subsequent land development process?
This is the thing.
I'm just saying, have you been thinking?
No, I mean, this is your approval of the plan. So unless we identify specifically what they need to do, I don't know, I mean, Brian needs direction when he gets the revised plan to say, do their review not comply with this condition? So if it's not that they have to do all of these eight bullet points, what is it then? Is it that there's two of these and they can agree that the board's okay with them implementing just those two?
Yes.
Okay.
Bullet point two and four.
Sure, sure. It's the second bullet point, I think, is that.
The place listed by Berniums, which are all non-native with natives, like black cotton, arrow wood.
Correct, and the fourth specific to the CUSA.
Okay, so we could revise condition six to read, applicant shall revise the landscape plan to address bullet points two and four in whatever the email is. In short, yeah.
January, January, so the email, yeah.
And when I write it, I'll rewrite those bullet points and then we'll go back to the email.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board on this application?
Just a question. You do have an operator for the assisted living facility now?
We do, yes.
What's the name of the operator?
We're still, we haven't signed the or executed the agreement. We're still under legal review. But we have selected, we have finalized the selection. So at this point, I don't want to make the announcement of exactly who it is. But what I can tell you is they're in, they're currently managing over 22 facilities actively. And they're in numerous states, including Pennsylvania. And I can certainly, within the next few weeks, possibly in the next 30 days, send you a couple of facilities in Pennsylvania that they're managing, as an example. But that's where we are on the operator.
And will you have a separate operator for the self-storage facility?
Yes, that's our intention, yes.
And do you know who they, can you tell us who they are?
We have not selected, we focused on the assisted living facility. We have not selected an operator for the self-storage yet.
All right, are there any comments from the public?
Yeah, I'm just trying to recall, I was at the zoning hearing a couple of months ago. And the gate to the emergency access was where the covered, new covered loading area is. Is that correct? You moved the gate?
There are two gates along the emergency route.
Okay.
One that we spoke of, that's a keyed entry for the storage facility. And then this four-coach chair here on the backside of it, we intend to have, the thought process is now sliding garage door that can be lifted and or mechanically motorized for movement with a key or a lock and a lockbox.
Get through the gates?
Sorry?
That's to get through the gates. They're going to be sliding doors?
Lift doors, like the standard garage door?
Well, are you talking about off of Walnut? No, well, yeah, I'm talking about the emergency, excuse me.
Yeah.
Yeah, the emergency access back here, we had this discussion at the last meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, we need to get him back there. And then also, I don't believe this covered loading area was part of the plan. Was it?
It was, it was. There are three points. Let me correct what I had stated. First is the keyed entry, this general location. We're contemplating the garage door because the emergency route goes along the side, self-storage makes the movement out to Walnut Street. Walnut Street currently today is bollards and chains, and we're going to upgrade that because we have a six-foot privacy fence along Walnut. We're going to have a sliding gate there, lock, key lockbox.
Okay. So if there are trucks parked in the covered loading area, how are emergency vehicles going to get through there?
Loading is going to be, it's a procedure that's going to have to be developed.
I mean, there'll be people inside moving their stuff in and out, so trucks could be parked there for a length of time without being occupied. So at that point, it really makes that emergency exit and entrance not very useful.
It's a temporary situation. Trucks can only be there. We will, it's a great point with the signage. We'll note that as, you know, no stopping after hours along the loading. But, you know, anywhere along this route, we currently don't have any, you know, no parking, no stopping. It's a situation that would be monitored during the day in an emergency situation. Those vehicles would have to stop their loading procedures at the.
Okay, I don't see that as a good solution. And I mean, I'm not sure that it's good to have a loading area in emergency access roadway because it will block traffic at some point.
And the only thing I can offer is, again, your fire marshal had reviewed the plan. We revised it. This was not an issue that was developed or never too.
And how high is this roof?
It would be to the height minimum for an emergency vehicle, which.
12 feet?
13 feet, yeah, 13 foot 11s along those lines.
Then the road is only wide enough to accommodate one vehicle, is that right?
It's 30 foot wide.
Okay.
Yeah, in that area.
Thank you, Steve. That's a good point. Yep.
Steve, I agree with you. It's a moot point now, but my opinion on all this is that it would be better planning to have only the, again, it's a moot point, but it's my opinion to have only the assisted living there, facility present for the health, safety, welfare, and probably for those residents. And that the economics could have been offset by the facility more parking. That's just my opinion. That's why I think, but. But again, it's also a key factor, but that's my, that's my.
Thank you, Don.
Yes, just for clarification, the back exit, is that an emergency exit or is that where trucks and vehicles after they store their belongings will exit through that?
Yeah, it's only an emergency exit. In fact, it'll be gated so that it doesn't get used by any other vehicles other than emergency vehicles.
So box trucks and the light vans that then have, they're going to have to back out?
They'll back out, yes, correct. Or back in to unload.
I recently needed to use one of these for a couple of weeks down in Virginia. I tell you, they're really slick, some of what they're doing with these. And I did pull in a big garage, pulled in, but it was like part of the building, part of the storage. So I don't know if there's a way to work it that the garage and the access point would actually go on the building or bottom floor of the building. But what also surprised me is they learned that a lot of contractors use these storage facilities for their equipment machinery instead of renting out or leasing out a warehouse. So they come and go at the end of their workday and then deliver the paint or dry, or the salts or what have you. And then they return in the morning to pick up all their equipment to go. So I'm just concerned if there's going to be a little more traffic on a daily basis than what had been presented. And possibly limit those hours in the morning until the paint's out. Except contractors are going to be in a fire system, is that going to create an issue or something like that?
The hours of operation are at seven, but what I will say is that being climate controlled, usually the rental rates are different. Usually more of the contracting happens in the traditional storage facilities. So this being, you know, three, four stories elevator-based, it's usually climate control needs for that, that our traffic counts and what we project, or it's not going to be as frequent, but we'll take that into consideration.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the public? No. All right, so now we're going to need a motion to approve resolution number six dash 2024, granting conditional final land development approval for 943 South High Street. Is someone willing to make?
And if I could add two things, just based on your conversation. One is that in condition three, actually you had wanted, they had accepted out from McCormick-Taylor's letter of compliance in paragraph two, but we can add that applicant shall have signage designated for loading areas. And then we revised paragraph six to say that applicant shall revise landscape plan to address bullet points two and four in the email from Henry Alexander dated January 7th, 2024. And then I'll list what those two are.
Great.
Do we also want to list the hazardous signs outside the building or is that just?
It's up to whether you want that.
I personally would want.
Okay, so that would be a new condition.
Is that standard? Is that something that's, they're not usually listed outside of these facilities?
No, no stopping, the wiring?
No.
No, inside the facility.
What's some of the things that we're not, you're not going to allow in hazardous materials?
Preventable, it's fine.
Okay, it's probably just a few things, paint, you know.
What I want is put a sign right by the elevator, around the engine store, so you can check on right out the gate.
As a reminder, yeah, thank you. I appreciate that.
Great, so that'll be the third one, Kristen.
Right.
I'm going to just ask, Sam, what's your timeline on this? Assuming we approve this, give the go-ahead. What's your, when you were to structure your town down to quality and what do you look at?
We're thinking sometime around between June and August would be an idea.
Sorry, would be when you would start to demolish?
Yeah, I mean, it's a bouncing out between waiting for any of your period and then the developers coming to find the agreement. And then closing, arranging closing.
So let's say you do deal with August, what do you anticipate will be completed?
By the end of 2025.
Yeah. That's helpful. Thank you. Okay, so is somebody, did you want to make a motion? Is somebody willing to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, to approve the resolution?
Yes, to approve what?
Would he ask, suggest?
Has suggested us, yes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Do I say Sean?
Excuse me, just answering the question.
Yes.
Kristen, do we need to add the waiver for the preliminary final approval? I didn't see it in the, it's been requested, but I didn't see it in the motion.
Sure.
So to include?
To include the waiver that allows them to go forward with the preliminary slash final.
Okay, included in the motion?
Yes.
So you made your motion?
I admitted my motion.
And you're okay with that, Sean?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any public comment on the motion presented? Hearing done, all right. Board members, all in favor of the approval, please say aye.
Aye.
It's been a long hearing. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Congratulations. Wow.
Wish more.
You as well. Thank you all so much. Okay. Moving on to item number six, discussion regarding the following applications before the zoning hearing board. We will begin with 800 North Five Points Road, which is Pharma Block LLC, requesting relief from section 84 dot 55 dot I2 in order to reduce the required number of parking spaces from 104 to 61. Chris, do you want to introduce this?
Chair, I'll turn this over to Michelle.
Good evening.
Yes.
In regards to application two dash 2024, Pharma Block LLC located at 800 North Five Points Road. They appeared before the zoning hearing board this past Monday evening, January 22nd, 2024. This property is located in the I-1 Campus Light Industrial District. As mentioned, applicants saw a variance from section 84 dot 55 dot I2 of the township zoning ordinance in order to reduce the required number of parking spaces from 104 to 61. This application is in conjunction with a proposed expansion of the existing building in order to create additional manufacturing and storage space in the rear of the property. The hearing was closed that evening and a final decision will be rendered within the 45-day requirement per the municipality's planning code, which will be out there February 26th meeting.
Okay.
Chair, I will add that we did ask the zoning hearing board to consider a recommended condition of approval to set aside certain spaces for EV parking. I believe that was discussed at the zoning hearing board last night. But those could also be addressed during building development process as the application will be required to go through development.
Moving forward, okay. Well, we were hoping to be able to speak with Pharma Block before the zoning hearing board meeting, but we had to cancel that our meeting last week. Is there a representative here tonight from Pharma Block?
I do not believe so.
No, okay. Are there any comments or questions from board members?
I have one question relative to, it wasn't actually their request for the zoning relief. It was, is there land development on the east side of this property? It's not clear to me whether there is a proposed land disturbance for a new building or structure there that doesn't exist today. So I know where the extension is here adjacent to the building, but is that a new structure on the east side of the parking lot?
There is a new structure, this is a new structure.
And is that a road there around the back of it? What is that?
That's the burn of the stormwater, the storm machine cells.
Understood, thank you.
What's the next structure? Is that where they had the, the new structure? Is that a building or is that?
So the pilot plan, which is about 4,200 square feet, a little over 4,000 square feet, is going to be an additional testing lab. And the structure on our right side is a warehouse to store. And then the structure in the rear that Sean had mentioned about is a solid waste.
I thought that was a solid waste, but that's existing there now, the solid waste.
It's relocated.
Yeah, because there was something in the back there when I was there for their solid waste. And I thought it was in that general area.
I think it appears to be this area that shaded differently inside the pile transfer.
Okay.
So what's the new structure that's being?
I'm confused now. I thought the new structure was a solid waste relocated.
I'm saying there's this darker gray box shaded underneath the label.
Oh, yeah.
I think that may be what is being relocated in the back. It's not clear on this plan.
Yeah, it's not.
But that is, appears to be an existing structure because it has the same shading as the building does currently, the existing building.
Could we clarify that? Could we get that clarified? Where the head of the waste is going to be and it's going to be in that, if that's confirmed, it's in that building there?
That can only be handled through the land development process.
Okay.
They'll come before you for that though. This is just, what's before you tonight is just the application to reduce the parking, required parking challenge.
And that will be addressed at the other.
And if they get zoning, then they can afford to do land development. They can afford to do the full land development.
They also presented some information. I guess they inserted option one and option two.
Option one is just the reduction of the parking. Option two included a parking hold, where they would put parking in the front by the burn should the township request it at any point in time, if that was the option that the zoning hearing board chose to go with.
That's a little confusing. What do you mean a hold? Like a reserve?
Yeah, parking in reserve.
There are variants on their setback to allow them to be able to do parking in the front. That would be option two, right?
Correct.
Yeah, they weren't sure when they submitted the application if the board would be in opposition to the request to reduce the parking by so much. So they thought, okay, well, if the board's going to be opposed to that, then we would be willing to do option two. But if we do option two, which means put in additional reserve parking, we need a variance because it doesn't meet the setback requirement.
Okay. So this is ultimately approved and supported by the zoning hearing board. This would then move to land development where we could work out some of the EVs that we talked about, right?
And I had a conversation with applicant's counsel prior to the zoning hearing, just to, he had called asking me about the process. And I had mentioned to them that the board is very interested in green initiatives and that some of the questions might come about green roofs, solar roofs, EV parking. He said that that's very much in line with the applicant and the type of business that they have, and that they absolutely would explore that and be, you know, engaging in that conversation with you at land development.
Good, great. Are there any questions or comments? Yes, Steve?
I'm going to bring up my favorite subject. Can we get them to put sidewalks in? And I'll tell you why, because there's a lot of residents that live on Airport, right around the corner. You've got a 55 and Edward community. You also have ancient housing, several buildings back there. And when you start to piece these things together, eventually you have sidewalks that extend the whole way, maybe up to the park for example. Because the park is only a short distance up the road. So this is an opportunity for the supervisors to say, look, we would like sidewalks. And then when the moving company next door asks for a variance, at some point, you can finish it right up the street.
Yeah, this is something we can address in the land development process.
I'm sorry?
That's something we can address during the land development process.
Did you?
But it's a good point. It's a very good point. We will definitely consider talking to them about that.
Yeah, Steve, they're at the first disrelief. They're at the first step of what they're going to be doing, so that can be during the development.
Okay, I don't have a whole meeting.
That's a good suggestion, yes, again, any other questions or comments? No? Okay, so we don't have to really?
No, there's no, Madam Chair, there's no action required by the board.
Okay, all right, wonderful. Okay, so moving on to the second application, the West Ocean Shopping Center, Capital Enterprises, requesting relief from sections 84 dash 52, T4, 84 dash 52 dot T1, 84 dash 52, and 84 dash 52 R9 for the duty signage. I will turn it over to Karen.
Good evening, my name's Carrie Nace, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Fox Rothschild, here this evening on behalf of the applicant, Capital Enterprises. As you know, we've been here previously with regard to the redevelopment of the West Ocean Shopping Center. Here with me this evening, on behalf of the owner, applicant Capital Enterprises, is Chris Robbins, principal, also here's Chris Jensen and David Stewart from T and M Associates, the civil engineers. Allison Mather is here on behalf of Target, as well as Chris Reholt, who is the representative of Chick-fil-A. You may recall, again, we did receive final land development approval to redevelop this shopping center, which would allow for freestanding fast food restaurants, which is going to be operated by Chick-fil-A, as well as redevelopment of the former Kmart store for new retail stores which will be operated by Target. In connection with that redevelopment, the tenants are proposing to install certain directional signage, excuse me, as well as wall signs with respect to their space. In addition, during the land development process, there were a lot of discussions about internal circulation of the shopping center, and in connection with that, we are also proposing to install certain wayfinding signs, which would direct pedestrians and vehicles coming into the various stores within the center. There were also some discussions about enhancing the access drive out on Turner Lane and making that a better traffic, directing people to use that access as well, and opening it up as a entrance into the center. So we are also proposing to install a new monument sign out along Turner Lane as well. I do have handouts, I'm not sure what, if you have the full application?
We do.
Yeah, okay. So what's shown up on this screen is, we did submit just an overall site plan that identifies where the various wayfinding signs are going to be proposed, as well as the, there's also a new pylon sign that will be out along Paley Pike, and then also just identifies the different directional signage and wall signage that's being proposed by the two tenants. I'm going to just go through the application and just identify the relief that we are asking for, and then I'll open it up to any questions that you have with respect to certain signage, and the appropriate individual here this evening can answer the question whether it relates to wall signage for Target, Chick-fil-A, or just internal to the shopping center. So the first variance that we're asking for is to allow for an off-site freestanding business sign at the entrance drive to the shopping center off Turner Lane, as I mentioned to you. As you're aware, the actual entrance into the shopping center is owned by the township, we currently have an access easement that dates back to when the center was developed. So since that sign would be located on township property, we would need relief if the township was inclined to allow that freestanding sign there. We did have an onsite meeting with representatives of the township, township engineer was there, Mr. Robbins was there, to identify the location of the sign. Certain landscaping will need to be removed, we're also replacing landscaping in terms of around the base of the sign. I do have handouts, so you can see what that looks like now that we've had a meeting and had an opportunity to discuss this.
Where exactly would it be on the map?
So I have full handout here with everything, it was just kind of a little bit easier than our full package here because it's items that we'll go through, it's our additional papers.
And I also understand that you were going to appear before the zoning hearing board, but you pushed that back until their next zoning hearing meeting?
Correct.
Correct, so you've not appeared before the zoning hearing board, it's not going to change.
Correct, so we did have a hearing that was scheduled, I guess, Monday evening, we wanted to have an opportunity to come before you to go through the signage, answer any questions that you had, and we did agree to a continuation until the February 26th here.
I appreciate that, sure.
So this sign is, I think, Brian's bringing it up here, if you look at the handout that I just gave you after the full site plan, there's a new plan here that was not submitted with the zoning hearing board packet, and this identifies the location of the monument sign at the entrance of Turner Lane. We did turn the orientation of it, so it is a little bit more of a right angle to Turner Lane. The zoning code requires that a freestanding sign be located no closer to the right of way than the height of the, of the sign. The sign is, let's see, so it's about 12, 12 feet, the?
Is this signage number one? Is this signage number one on this, on this map?
No, you have to hear to sheet four.
Oh, is there an?
Seven foot high sign, seven foot high, that sign?
It's the very last page, yep, that's a lot.
Seven foot high? Eighty-four inches?
Yes, yes. And because of the placement and the existing conditions, we're approximately two feet from the right of way line. So, and again, that would be the right of way line, not the actual cartway or paved area. As you can see here, this is a rendering of, it's a photograph with the proposed sign kind of superimposed on there to give you an idea of what it would look like. That would be oriented a slight more of a right angle, this was done before our site visit, when we had a chance to talk about the location, but this gives a jump.
Would it be illuminated also?
I'm sorry?
Would it be illuminated?
Yes.
It will actually be illuminated 24/7, I'll leave you.
As you can see in the handout, we are also proposing some landscaping around the base of that monument sign, it's not shown in this photograph here, but in the submission we do have, there you can see, this is a depiction of what the proposed sign would look like along with the landscaping along the base of it. So this particular sign would require two variances, one, it's technically offsite since it's within the township property, and then also due to the setbacks since we're two feet, where seven feet would be required. And again, that is due to certain site conditions out there, limitations that we have with regard to where that placement can be.
So how far is it actually then from the paved, from the road?
David, or Chris, do you have that? Approximately another five feet, so if you take it from the road, then it would actually be closer to that required seven foot.
Okay.
But since it's taken from the actual right of way, then that gets reduced, it's really only two feet from the right of way.
This property, is it on the township road?
Township property.
Yeah, so this is, this is actually the property, this area here is owned by the township, so we have access. We would need an easement for the actual sign, we currently have an easement for the access drive.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board on this sign?
Who would maintain the?
Can I speak?
Yes, go ahead.
Who would maintain the shrubbery and all around the sign?
The, Capital Enterprises, that has to be specified in these.
I noticed there are removal of one, two, four trees proposed, they put this sign in, 24-inch diameter, that's quite a mature tree, so that illustration, it's really going to, the trees that you see in the illustration actually have to be removed to accommodate the sign.
Correct.
And this area, if I recall right, it's close to the creek that we have a lot of issues with.
Yes.
I know it's not Long Island Avenue, but it's more mature growth to remove, the more we should exacerbate, potentially flooding issues around that creek, so see both issues here, while we want to promote access in from Turner Lane and have people use that versus going to Paley Pike if they have to, but on the other hand, is there a better location with a sign that doesn't disturb much of the, of the mature growth? That's my question.
I mean, it's a good point.
Yeah, mature trees there too, they're pretty big.
Yeah, it's kind of a sensitive area, I guess, geologically with the creek being there.
Well, I'm just concerned, part of that area is wetlands too, did you look in to see if it was, if you're able to disturb the wetlands area from a DEB standpoint?
Right, it's floodplain area, Chris or David, if you could come up here from an engineering standpoint, just to address that concern.
Good evening, so the proposed sign is located within the floodplain, we took that into account when we were detailing the sign, to ensure that the actual monument or the base of the sign would have minimal to no impact on the floodplain.
Does it mean the zoning ordinance for the floodplain regulations though, with that?
Yes, so we've been coordinating and discussing that part of the floodplain ordinance with Brian as far as the impact it would have on the floodplain, and ensuring that that would not cause any issues in that area.
I just have the floodplain regulations, Tom, I don't know, or something like that, I know that's very restrictive, but what can be placed?
Yeah, that would be a lot, yeah.
And that was something we had actually raised many times when we had discussions about putting a sign here, and so we have had conversations and had discussed that with Brian, and certainly with the private good regulations in terms of floodplain, but it was designed specifically to take that into account.
The sign itself is supported on two pipes, and the sign doesn't start with the floodplain, of course it's around the side, but it was part of the design.
Is that like a PVC construction or something non-corrosive on the footings of the sign? Flood, floodplain?
No, then this, it's sealed pipe, but it'd be epoxy coated. Oxycoded floodplain.
I mean, the issue, I think, is the removal of the mature trees that add is?
So just a question, the intention of this sign is to have traffic coming down Turner Lane, not necessarily go all the way up to Paley Pike, but to realize, yes, it can get to Target by turning in on this entrance here, so is there an option to have the sign on that, that side of the, of the turn in, so the left turn, would it be facing you if you come this way? Because if you're coming the other way on Turner Lane, you've already, you've already come off Paley Pike, basically, you know, you would have gone down Paley Pike and turned in to get to Target or wherever else, so you're really, if you're coming that way on Turner Lane, you're not really going into the West Ocean Shopping Center. It's the traffic this way, traffic this way is not really going to want to turn right, it's traffic coming the other way that wants to turn left, coming the back way to Target, that's what I think the purpose of the sign really would be beneficial for, to remind people you don't have to go all the way up to Paley Pike, you can turn in here. So would that location there be a reasonable spot for the sign?
It probably couldn't be put there, it could be a little more trees, and there's more.
Yeah, maybe it's solving the original problem, but?
Yeah, on the other side, the side that we chose at the moment, a lot of those trees that are in there, you can see they're all, a lot of them are dead.
Yeah, I just saw that.
The biggest ones are all dead, and so that's why, you know, with Brian out there looking at it, also the stream is, you've got a high tensioned power line running through there, and then you've got another maybe 30 or 40 feet, I'm estimating, I'm not an engineer, to where the stream is, you can see the culvert of the stream, it's plenty ways away, and the pottery does come up, but, you know, I mean, we're open, I mean, the town was pushing to have us sort of beautify that entrance and also identify it, and I think that's a great idea, but not a problem with that. We spent a lot of time out there just sort of walking into a few points for each location around that corner, trying to figure out what are the best sightlines, and where the most traffic is going to see that sign, and that's why we made it a double sided sign, because it's going to be 90 degrees to the road on that other side. There's also, there's power on the one side of the road and on the other, you know, engineering, we probably saw that, the fact that there was power on one side of the road is helpful as well.
Can they be solar?
There's not going to be enough solar, we would be a supplemental type of thing, and then we would have to have pieces around the area that are solar, I mean, the sign itself is, it's a pretty narrow top sign, you wouldn't have enough solar there.
Are you saying that the trees are dead, the ones that you're looking at removing?
Most of them, not all of them, and I don't want to sit here and say that there has to be all dead, but you can see them right there, all the mature trees are sticking out that way.
So to that point, we did do a site visit, and some of the trees do appear to be dead, we can definitely do, we have landscape architects, part of our team, have to go out and just confirm that.
I mean, that makes a difference to me, if we're removing dead trees as opposed to?
And we're adding trees back, there is a?
Correct, yeah.
There's a wire sign, and so for every two trees we take down, we put a tree back, and the tree that we put back would be behind the sign, so.
Right, I get your point about the power, certainly, I know that it would be another issue to move it to the other side and add power, but to Sean's point, I kind of agree that the people coming from this way haven't approached the shopping center yet, they don't know what's coming up ahead of them, but you're saying you based this on traffic?
No, well, no, we just had a numerous site visits, and so you're just walking around and trying to figure out exactly how the layout has the best viewpoints. If you look at the site management, the way the angle of that corner is, and the sign is 90 degrees to the road, it does give you a lot of square footage, whereas if you're coming around, because of the road curves, like, the other side has slightly less impact, and again, we're going to be cutting to more mature, more overgrown.
And then just one other thing to add on to the possibility of needing to take down more trees, those power lines have an easement associated with those, and the placement now has it, so that we have clearance from the power lines, whether that be vertically or horizontally, so we moved to the other side, we may be taking down even more trees if we're doing on that side.
Okay.
Yeah, it looks like that might be the case, I think actually, I'm going to revise my opinion and say that given you've got dead trees, that probably the least disturbance is where you're showing it, and it is the most visible spot, so.
I would say from a financial and commercial basis, there's not a lot of pressure on either, do either one, pick one versus the other, you know, we just think it's obviously a good idea to upgrade that entrance, make it a little bit more formal, create a little bit more visibility to, so people know the entrance is there, and again, this is something several meetings, and it's not that.
Could you explain again where the replacement trees would go?
There's quite a bit of township land right behind the sign, so we could put them anywhere you like, as long as I decide, so that they grow a little bit.
Thank you.
I have a question about the design of the sign. Not to be too picky, and I know that, you know, we can't really mandate a certain look to the way that the sign would appear, I would just like to maybe see something a little different as far as colors.
Well, what we were doing is taking the iconic main sign of the shopping center, it's been there since 1958, it's been updated and painted over the years, and we're going to refurbish it as part of this rehab consent, and we did a riff on that sign, and that sign is, I wasn't around when it was built, but it, you know, would I design the sign that way myself, I'm not sure I would, but because of the history of the shopping center, I feel it's important to not lose a sense of history.
I certainly, certainly understand.
And so if we can, I think there's a picture, there you go, click on that one. So that's the shop, that's the center of the sign, and it's really, the idea, I know, of the folks back then, very bothered, no vote. So that's the shop, that's the center of our sign. And it's really, the idea, I know, of the folks back then, very popular, the folks that were looking at it was, you know, it was a mid-century kind of thing. Straps going around, it's got the simple box in the background. And this, you know, I said, this new sign at the back is going to be the twenty four seven. This sign is the twenty four seven. Originally, it had neon, which really looked a bit century. Unfortunately, we upgraded that to a neon to a color theme for efficiency. The intention is to rehab this sign too and repaint and clean it up and make it fresher. But you can see where we got the design from the rear sign.
Yes, no, I certainly made the connection and I, I think it's great that you want to kind of keep the character of the shopping center. I totally understand. I guess I was a little concerned just because, I mean, and this is just speaking for myself, when I look at the sign with the red and the blue, like it's a little difficult to read and I just wanted to make sure that the sign is going to be legible and, and read along.
And the fact with LEDs the way they are now, the fact that the light going goes out, it's going to have a nice pop to it. This concern I have as well with engineers and designers, to make sure. And also underneath the sign, the stores, they're all the, against the background.
During the planning commission meetings, which you all came through several times, there was a lot of concern about the traffic that this new development with the Target and Chick-fil-A is going to represent. In any way we could encourage folks to use that entrance as a way of getting in there, we wouldn't support that. So this sign would certainly have to.
I have one question relative to that. I have concerns about what we're proposing with the new sign. I go in that way, I've gone in that way for a while. There's only a stop sign there. A lot of people don't even use that stop sign. Plus you have the trucks coming out. That's where they, that little alleyway there is where the truck, the big trucks come and do a lot of deliveries. I guess I have concerns about that traffic area there because it's, right now it's bad and we don't have as much traffic there. And then we're going to increase the traffic even more, which is a good thing, because we have another entrance, but I'm just concerned about that whole area and can handle it? Are people going to really stop? I mean, people don't stop now, like I said, there've been.
I mean, we did enhance the glory, despite the separation of the lanes and the approach to the road and the wide there as well. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with your concern, but we're interested in trying to.
Certainly. To that point, during the landfilling processes, you know, we had our traffic consultant do a traffic study. And we looked at that area and are making improvements, you know, within that area to try to address those concerns. But that has been reviewed by the township and the township traffic consultant as well, you know, in terms of those improvements that are being proposed. So we did take that into consideration during that approval process.
Yeah, even if they put lights on the stop sign, flashing lights or something, I don't know, people don't see it or they just don't care. But every time I go there, there's nobody that stops at that stop sign. They just plow through it because you don't think anybody's going to be coming from the other direction. There aren't that many people coming right now. So I'm just going to make, enhance it somehow.
Turner, as you're coming out to Turner, where's the stop sign that's right inside the shop?
Inside the shopping center. There's a made street name, so it's just an alley kind of thing. Next to the buildings.
No, right, as you kind of cross the bridge and you enter the circulation of the shops.
Right, right. I mean, just take a look at it just to prevent, can't run accidents.
So the next one. Okay, sure, go ahead. Well, I don't, okay, I'm just, I was going to let you roll through all of the signs, but if you have one question.
Yeah, I, I question honestly the necessity for a sign back there. If you're only people are going to use it as local people, you're not going to have people coming off to it to, or off of, off of Paley Pike. I believe they're going to enter through the front or through Turner Square. The back is going to be mostly local people. And if you don't already know what's back there and how to get to the front, I mean, and Target isn't even putting a rear entrance in back of their store. So, you know, it would be nice to have a rear entrance in Target, but they're not even looking at this as a viable entrance. And I just believe it's going to be mostly local people using it. So, you know, more signs, I, I just think it detracts from the same.
Okay, thanks. Yes, Marty.
I just wanted to comment that I agreed with Sean in his original statement that it made perfect sense to me to move the sign to the other side for the same reason that the car is coming off of Paley Pike and already past the other entrances. So I thought it made more sense on the other side. And then also it looked like maybe the tree line, the tree, the trees are on. That's, so, so if you're coming off of Pike, is it by parts there?
Yes, sure.
Are you willing to be able to see the sign with all the trees that are next to the road?
Yeah, the nice thing about that little corner where we're talking about putting the sign, you see it sort of projects into the road.
Okay.
Which really, when you, we're going to take a half circle and make it landscaped and make it grass and then there's going to be a mulch mound and the bushes and the sidewalks and that. So it really does, again, I didn't really have a dog in the fight as far as which plant goes on. I know that it'll get electric on one side, but it'll probably get electric on the other. But after looking at the trees and looking at the approach and walking the road from both sides. We've been out there several times, I've interviewed folks, and just seen like that was the best approach. If you're coming from Turner and you're looking across, really, it's very open, you can see the sign right in front of you. And if you're coming from the other direction, it's this little void of land that is part of this curve. We're going to cut this half circle or landscape out, so it's going to be a property part of the way your eyes go. So, I mean, that was a lot, again, again, I wasn't really married to either side. And it wasn't even the shopping center originally suggested.
Right.
I just thought it was a fine idea, the idea of kind of fixing up the back there and making it a little more formal. Tie the landscaping together with the shopping center.
Sure, I think the idea of the sign back there is great. And then also actually I did have the same thought as well. I thought, how do you tactically address that? So just, just to make a comment that I have the same thought as I.
Thank you, Marty, appreciate it. Would you like to continue? Yep. So moving on to standing, sticking with the freestanding signs, we are also proposing a freestanding sign along Paley Pike, which would have the Target and Chick-fil-A identified on it. Right now, if you look at the first sheet of the overall plan set that I provided to you. You can see up right along here, which is the right of way property line, we have freestanding sign number one. That detail is actually within the sign packet for Target. It's back on age thirteen of that. There again are two variances that we're asking for, for that particular sign. One relates to the setback. Again, the setback would be required to be thirty feet because it's the, no closer to the right of way than the height, the height we're proposing is thirty feet. Because of the very large right of way that we have within that area. The sign would be setback from the actual right of way, just about one and a half feet. But again, from the parkway itself is probably.
Thirty, thirty.
About thirty eight feet. So if you go to the first. So we're just trying to find it.
It's part of the current package, so you can.
The actual sign itself or the location?
Yeah, no, it's not the.
The sign itself, okay. Continue, you're there. Okay, so you are requesting the setback be one point four three feet from the right of way where thirty feet is required? Correct, and we're actually thirty eight feet from the road itself. The reason we need it is the right of way is actually very deep when you look at the sight of play out there. And this is, you said this is the freestanding sign number one? Correct. Does everybody see that on their map? It's right here.
What's the height of these signs?
So the height of that sign is thirty feet, which implies with the zoning ordinance. And then we're also asking for a variance with respect to the sign area that's permitted. So you're permitted to have a fifty square foot sign area. Since we have both of the tenants on there, we're looking for, it's proposed at one hundred thirty five point seven square feet. And again, we believe the, the size and the location here is really necessary just due to the location of the shopping center and people coming off of two oh two and going around that part of Paley Pike. So the purpose of this sign is to be sort of, to draw people from two oh two and let them know that the Targets and Chick-fil-A are here.
And you're talking off the off rank, you're coming right into the parking lot, it's right there, which is the empty's land, our land starts right after that. And so we've got a very narrow margin there to see the, okay, this is Target, because it's right on.
Just to correct that, the square footage that's actually one and seventy six feet, you would want a Target in the regional.
That's a pretty big sign, right? I'm looking at this now and you've got LA Fitness there, then we have this sign, then you've got Wells Fargo. There's like a train of signs here for this shopping center. And I'm just quite, you know, I look at, if I go to look to Target and Edston in Lionville. It's a smaller monument sign to direct your backup on Sennott Boulevard next to it. The one up in Lionville there is on Eagle, Eagleview Boulevard. They're not as big as this sign.
Or the Glen Mills, Glen Mills even, it's not that big, yeah.
I mean, my initial reaction to this is, do really, your sign is big. I mean, there's no obstruction to the view of where Target is. It's visible, it'll be visible off two oh two for sure. Again, it's, you know, it'll be a lot more local traffic. Maybe there'll be some going off two oh two, but you get into wide off two oh two to come to it. I'm not opposed to a Target sign, but just the size of this and the Paley Pike now becoming a stretch, three or four signs in a row, all associated with the same basic shopping center, it just doesn't seem something I think is a good idea. That's my view.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Sean. So this is actually the exit that I take, I mean, I take this exit pretty much every day. And all of the stores are visible when you're getting off. I don't know that it would be a huge necessity to have a sign this big. And I, I agree with Sean. I think if you put too, like you cluster too many, it's just going to be loud and confusing.
Doesn't look good either.
It's going to be like billboard city here.
Yeah, aesthetically, it's not very good.
What's the height of these telephone poles? Close to thirty feet maybe, maybe a little more. So you can be, the height of these telephone poles, basically.
And we also have people, we have residents that are living along the street.
Yeah.
And so I want to make sure that we're keeping them in mind too, because it's going to be in their front yard, so, I mean, it sounds like we're not.
I mean, I know further on in the variance, if you're looking for signs on the buildings themselves, that'll be greater than allowed or the numbers greater than allowed, I think that's an area that's more supportive in terms of putting the branding on visible versus having it back up at the street. It's just my opinion.
Yeah, and I see more use for the one we were just discussing, the one off Turner Lane, because I, I feel like that is going to give people some direction. I just, I don't know that this is necessary.
You know, you're talking about being one point four or three feet from the right of way.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Looking for an obstruction here for vehicle traffic to comply.
Well, again, the right of way sits back from the road, which is thirty five, almost forty feet.
We're going from thirty feet to one point seven five, that's a big difference.
So I guess the question is, is what would the board like to do regarding this specific sign, right? I mean, we.
So I would oppose this.
We said opposed, that's not too, would never be, not big.
Would you be amenable to still allow a pylon sign within that location, but if the wall sign or the sign area was reduced? So I believe the Chick-fil-A logo that's on here is approximately forty, about forty square feet. Just to give you an idea of what, you know, fifty looks like. So again, adding two one there would still exceed the fifty foot, fifty square feet requirement. You know, we were trying to add two one here so that we didn't have too many pylons along that frontage. So would the board still be amenable to a pylon sign, but if we were able to reduce that sign base?
I guess my question, Dave, what are the size of the signs that are there now existing for the other properties? Because I wouldn't want to exceed that, so whatever that is. I think to be in line, why should Targets be larger than any other housing facility? Or Chick-fil-A or any other resident business there?
What, I, I'm not familiar with our sign alignment. Does every tenant have the right to a sign at the front of this property? What is it, what is allowed?
Well, if you, previously, and I don't know if the code changed, but at some point in time we were informed that it was each building could have one. But you were, you weren't allowed to put multiple tenants on a pylon. And that's why we ended up having the LA Fitness had its own sign because it's a building and we couldn't put them on the West Goshen Shopping Center pylon that's there. So that's how we kind of came to having several pylons, because we were told that you couldn't have more than one tenant. And I don't know if that changed over time, but I know when we were here, when LA Fitness came in, we had the conversation and that's what we were directed at that time.
The section that I'm reading is R nine. It says, business industrial signs, where a single business in our industry occupies a single lot and three signs are permitted, one of which being freestanding. Where multiple businesses and or industries are located on the same lot, but in an attached building, one freestanding sign is permitted. Additionally, one wall per roof sign per business is permitted. Where multiple businesses are located in separate buildings on the same lot, up to three signs per building being permitted. However, the total number of freestanding signs shall not exceed the lesser of one per building or one with two hundred feet of street current, whichever is less. So there's a lot of.
I think the issue is the attached building. So the shopping center itself from Acme to LA Fitness is one building. So it's a lot of tenants, but the LA Fitness, when we built it, we cut up through to the middle of the shopping center there, took out the old bookstore. And the LA Fitness is a standard building. So now it's stripped from Acme to LA Fitness, all those stores, one building, multiple businesses.
So it's a total of three buildings.
And, and with the Chick-fil-A, that would be.
Be four.
But is the entire shopping center one lot?
No, it'd be three different buildings.
But it's a lot, it's one lot.
It's one lot, it's one lot.
But that's why, so the main pylon, it says, West Goshen Center, it's all pylons, is representing Acme through LA Fitness.
Okay.
LA Fitness then, when we built their building back.
They can have their own sign.
They, they came to you, they came to the town and got a permit to put their sign up based on, they didn't even do that.
So then is it by right that the Target and the Chick-fil-A are entitled to one freestanding sign?
Each. Yeah.
Each.
That's not how I'm reading it, but again, this is.
Well, then how are you.
On the fly right here, so. I mean, I'm looking at R, R nine. Either four fifty two, R nine. I'm sorry, R nine, business and industrials.
Right, so where multiple businesses or industries are located in separate buildings on the same lot, up to three signs per building may be permitted. So we have separate buildings, is what Chris was just explaining, okay.
Put a sign on the building is one sign. You put a sign on, saying this is Target on the building, that is a sign.
Well, this is for three signs.
Three signs per building, you have two, two Target signs on the building, there's two or three.
No, that's like, there's one building, we have four buildings here.
Per building is what the business says.
Is Acme through LA Fitness one building?
Yes.
Is the LA Fitness one building?
Yes.
Is where the Target is going one building?
Yes, and then Chick-fil-A.
So, obviously the Acme through the LA Fitness has more than one sign just grandfathered in because they all have their own signs.
Part of the buildings themselves.
Yes. Just the name, the name of the.
Just the name, the name of the store, or whatever. The LA Fitness has the one sign and a freestanding sign. What you're proposing for the Target, and I don't wanna jump ahead, is something like nine signs on the building face, and this freestanding sign in conjunction with Chick-fil-A, which you're also asking for a variance for more signage for the Chick-fil-A.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
Well, my question is that, I feel like we need to have answers, is are you, are, are you entitled to have that freestanding sign? If there are separate buildings on this, on one lot, on the same lot?
I think the sentence is, "Where multiple businesses and industries are in separate buildings on the same lot, up to three signs per building are permitted. However, the total number of freestanding signs on and track, which is this whole lot, shall not exceed the lesser of one per building or one for two hundred feet of street frontage, whichever is left."
Correct.
I don't know what that tells me.
Right, so our street frontage is around a thousand. So we have, and we currently, there are, this pylon would be the third. So we have three, actually four buildings, because we have Acme to LA Fitness. LA Fitness, Target, but I need to...
Oh, that's right, well, Target's separate, so that's five. We'll be five.
I don't think we're gonna stop for this right here, to be honest. I think Shelby needs to get involved, I think we need to look at a plan, look what signs are there today. I don't feel comfortable making an introduction not having all the facts.
Yeah.
At a public meeting when we have a whole bunch of other things on.
And I would love to work with Shelby to get these answered. We had tried, and we're not able to make any progress to get some of these answered, questions answered previously. So, you know, we threw in everything that we thought that possibly needed variance, you know, as we went through this. So I'm happy to sit down with the township and work with these group and look at the overall site plan and have a conversation about what each of these are considered and how they fall under the code.
Okay. Yeah, that sounds good.
So we can move on, we'll leave the freestanding. So going to Chick-fil-A, so this one is, there's one variance to exceed the number of wall signs permitted for each business, where there's four wall signs and one wall sign is permitted. So you're allowed to have one sign per business. And again, because it's a freestanding building, we do have signage on each side of the building so that people can, coming from different directions, can identify the restaurant and Chick-fil-A, so whether they're coming downhill in either direction and also within the shopping center. Did you have any questions? We do have a representative here from Chick-fil-A, we have questions regarding the variance being requested.
I have no questions for that variance. Does anybody else on the board have questions for this variance request?
Okay. Next, and I think I'll ask Allison Mather to come up, and we'll walk through the signs that's being proposed for Target, because it is a little bit unique than what I think we find in a lot of zoning ordinances when they do put some of these restrictions in terms of how many signs per business can go on a wall. But as you indicated, we are proposing that there are nine wall signs proposed, where one wall sign, again, is permitted for a business. Many of those signs are directional signs, which relate to the drive-up and pickup areas. We do have two actual identifying signs for Target, which is on the front of the building, which faces interior to the shopping center, and then also on the side that would face two oh two. And then in connection with those two, with connection with the total number, we also are asking for variance to exceed the permitted sign area with respect to how much wall signs are on each elevation. So under the code, you're allowed to have ten percent of the wall area, not to exceed two hundred square feet. And we are proposing, on the one storefront wall sign, we're proposing six hundred eighty square feet. And on the east side, we are proposing two hundred forty-six. And then we do have one additional, which is a freestanding drive-up beacon sign, where the, we looked at this, we weren't quite clear on the code, but we looked at it in terms of a freestanding kind of other sign, which has a maximum height of six feet, and we're proposing twelve feet plus the sole cap. So I'll have Allison kind of walk through the sign package that was submitted, and then answer any questions that you may have with respect to the signage.
Hi, good evening, Allison Mather, in the Target. You can see on the screen our front elevation, as Carrie said. It's the Target logo and Target words on the far right end. It's the Target logo, the bullseye. We consider those really like the advertising signs, right, the Target signs. The other three signs that you see on the front elevation, which are quite small, is to the right of the front entrance, is an order pickup sign. That is intended to direct customers who are in the parking lot already, that if they placed an order online and are going inside the store to pick it up, that's where you go. To the, in the center is the CVS sign, obviously, to let customers know there's a CVS inside the Target at this location. And then on the far right is a drive-up sign. So that is directing customers to around the side of the building, where it's the dedicated drive-up parking spaces. This is where if you've ordered on the app and you're having them bring your order out to your car, there's a very specific place to park for that. If you're not parked there, nobody can find you, they're not bringing your order to your car. So, you know, we try to segregate that from the overall parking so that it's clearer to customers where they should go, it's safer for our team members bringing the orders out. So this is to identify and start to direct them to that parking, which is around the right side of the building.
Can I interject a little question? So, these are for customers who are picking up an order that the staff brings out to the car.
Correct.
Is there gonna be a grocery component to this?
There is, yes.
The one in Exeter, the Target in Exeter, are those, they have spaces that are like order pickup, and they bring to your car, but they're in the parking lot?
Yes, well, this is a parking lot, but it's to the side of the building.
So when it says drive up, it's not drive up to the building, it's...
No, no, drive to specific parking spaces. But that's what, that's what the ordering is called. So if you're placing an order, it will say, it's a drive-up order.
Okay, so all those spaces over there for cars, for drive up?
Right, right. So the one you're talking about is like an older store where you had to retrofit that functionality. Obviously, it's something that's grown and evolved over the last few years especially. And so in those older stores, you just have to find a spot for it. But here, you know, and in newer stores, we're trying to dedicate an area away from the main parking lot, again, for the safety mostly of our team members.
Makes sense, yeah.
And to just corral that traffic. So those are the signs on the front of the elevation. And again, you know, somebody said about, you know, Target and Chick-fil-A getting, you know, why is Target so much larger than Chick-fil-A? I mean, this is a seventy-five thousand square foot.
It's a hundred twenty.
Sorry, just in our hearing, last week, it was seventy-five thousand. It's a hundred twenty thousand square feet, where Chick-fil-A's five thousand, right? So, you know, it's obviously a much larger store, but also the elevation is that much larger. And architecturally, you know, obviously, we want to advertise ourselves, but it's also breaks up the solid walls of the building, et cetera. So this is the right elevation that faces two oh two. We have, again, a Target bullseye, and then lower on the canopy there is the drive-up sign, which again is to tell the customers that they're in the right place to pick up their, get their drive-up order. I don't know if you want me to just continue with building signs, but this side of the building is also where those twelve-foot tall beacon signs will go. So that's another way to direct the customers, funnel them to that parking lot on the side of the building for their drive-up orders.
Sweetie, are the spots then along the building?
There are some along the building, then there's a drive aisle, and then there's some that face out to two oh two.
And you're saying that these signs would go along the ones along the building only, or are they gonna go...
The beacon sign, the tall, there's two of them, one at each end on the outside part of the parking area.
If you look at the first page of the Target packet?
It's very small, but you can see that.
You can see where S ten is painted, and it's, so if you look at this one. And then you look at where they have S ten, or the beacon sign. So it's really in the two, it's kind of at the end of that parking island there.
One on the north, planned north end, and one on the planned south end, since there will be customers coming from both directions.
Okay. So two of those.
Correct. And not to switch gears here with the height, but one of the variances we're asking for is the height of twelve feet for those. You know, they're only gonna be visible from two oh two, or once customers are headed towards the drive-up. And, you know, because we're trying to get customers in their vehicle to catch their attention, to direct them there, six feet is really just not effective for being able to be seen over parked cars, et cetera, to get customers there. So that's why we've designed them to be twelve feet, and we're asking for those variances.
And those are on page twenty of the signage?
They're a very narrow sign, they're not, you know, it's not an imposing sign. And only the very top of it, where it says "drive up," is illuminated. So it's, again, it's purely a directional, it's not, you know, we think they're fairly innocuous as far as...
But they would be clearly visible to two oh two.
I mean, they're, they're pretty small, you can see how small the drive-up is. That top portion where the drive-up wording is, is only, I believe, of a four square feet. So if you, you might see the illuminated signs there, if you have some other there.
It's one point eight.
But my point was just that they're facing two oh two, they're not facing, you know, the front parking lot or anywhere else. But again, you might see them from two oh two, you're not gonna be able to read drive-up from two oh two. The wording is very small. Oh, yeah, okay. Okay, so, sorry, the text itself, it's just one point eight two square feet. So you definitely will not be able to read it from, you know, like this, right? And then just as part of the nine signs, we do have two on the left rear of the building. I believe they're permitted, but they're permitted by right.
In terms of the size area.
Based on the wall area. But the number exceeds, it counts how many were put in it. Again, that is a bullseye and a drive-up sign, and as we were discussing, that's for those customers that are coming in from Turner to grab them before they drive all the way around the shopping center. So they can see the bullseye from afar to know where Target is, and then they'll be able to see as they get closer, the drive-up directional to go, you know, around the building. So those are our nine signs, and our two beacon signs for which we are asking for the variance.
Are there any questions from the board regarding any of these Target signs?
One question is, we have it, going back to, I guess it's S eleven it's called, and they're coming down, it says Turner there. You're having revert across the shopping center parking lot. Why are we not letting them go straight and go back where the grass is in the back of the building?
The S eleven signs are blade signs, so they are directional signs. And the intention for those is to direct them around the parking lot or drive up.
So those are located within that main access drive into the shopping center? The S eleven?
Yeah, and what are blade signs?
So again, that's, I'm sorry, page...
They're on the very last page. They're a directional sign, again, for the drive-up, they're not illuminated. And then I believe three of them, again, along the main entrance, or main circulation drive.
But you're not taking a variance for those?
They're permitted, they're permitted.
Okay, okay.
I just have a question, Johnny. When you go before the zoning hearing board, you're gonna have to develop a narrative about the hardship and the reason why you need to have all of these variances from our signards, which we have for a reason. I just wanna read a little bit from our signards, and that's from eighty, chapter eighty-four dash fifty-two sign regulations. It talks about number nine, "The proliferation of outdoor signs within the township, including billboards, would have the effect that Turner views escapes from public roadways, would have adverse effects upon the aesthetic values of properties within the township." And it goes on to say, number ten, "The Board of Supervisors has a significant government interest in preserving the aesthetic values of the township and properties located within the township, including without limitation of use rates from public roadways." And what in all, my point I'm making is, is what is your hardship here? That you have to have so many signs so big, that you have to have a variance from our ordinances in order to, you to be able to conduct your business?
Sort of starting out with aesthetics. They don't have a chance to answer.
Sure, so in terms of the wall signs, there's quite a few things. One is the location of the price, the retail store itself within the shopping center, and again, providing proper circulation and identification for people that are coming in to go back over, not just so that they know that it's Target itself. But a lot of these wall signs, which I don't think are typically contemplated in ordinances, are in fact directional signs that will point people to go in certain directions. So for drive-up, when they're driving through the shopping center, instead of, you know, stopping and looking around to figure out which way they're going to turn, they can easily see a sign that says "drive up area", and they then have enough time to recognize it, make the proper maneuvers through the center to get over to that area in a safe and efficient manner. So a lot of the variances really relate to the number of signs, because we do have the directional signs within, on the building, and the fact that we have an end cap with parking around. So we have people that are coming in from different areas and different size of the buildings. You don't have, unlike, you know, say, LA Fitness, who is kind of in the middle, where somebody's coming into the center and it's right there in front of them. You have people that are coming in the back and going to the side parking areas, you have order pickup, you have drive-up. So it's those things, and it's really more for, to provide proper circulation and direction to customers.
So, I mean, my, my opinion is that I completely, I understand the sign is needed for the Target in the shopping center. I think the use of the shopping center, this is just the nature of what it is. I think the only sign that I have a problem with potentially is the freestanding signs, because it's so close to residents. But I certainly understand the need for these specific signs. That's my, that's my opinion. Does anybody have any?
Yeah, so I have a problem with the number of signs along Palely Pike. I think it is not consistent with what John just read out relative to what we're trying to minimize on Palely Pike. And again, we have residents in on the other side of the street. It's not like it's a entirely commercial road there. I do believe that the building itself, to direct people to the right spot for order pickup, you know, whether it's, you know, where you're walking in or around the corner for the drive, the driving spots to pick up orders there, CVS, Target, I actually don't have a problem with some of that, given it's on the building itself. I also accept that some, I don't know if it needs all the signs that are listed, but some directional signage within the parking area would be useful. So someone turning in right in front of Acme to know that the best way to get over towards Target is to take that right turn with the blade sign versus driving right where people are walking across in the parking lot to the other businesses. It's a safer thing to say, oh, I need to go this way if I'm picking up at Target. So I think some of the directional signs are warranted, even if they exceed the number that perhaps is warranted within visage. But again, my biggest beef is certainly, I would not think a sign bigger than what is permitted on Palely Pike. And when we find out what the determination is relative to the number of signs, I would say whatever we can do to minimize new freestanding signs on Palely Pike is something I would... I would be opposed to them with respect to the zoning hearing board's review.
I can agree with that, Sean, and I also, if we, if we can put an additional sign on Palely Pike, I don't think it should be larger than existing signs, which is their pale, if it's allowed.
Which sign, aren't there a bunch of signs there? There's the main shopping center sign, is there a bank sign, is there a, which sign are you talking about? I just wanna be clear with sign.
All of them, all the signs, there shouldn't be any larger than the existing ones.
I think they're probably proposing all unless they're there, aren't you?
No.
No? Without being...
The shopping center. Yeah, I'm just... Or have you...
The main shopping center sign is probably more than a... I just, I have a main shopping center sign, it's probably more than a hundred acres, right?
Yeah.
The one that they showed, it'd be.
Yeah, Chick-fil-A and the Target, that is really good.
Yeah. So it's depending on what legal review is. And if we can, if they can put it there, then I wouldn't want it any higher than existing signs to do that.
Okay. So as far as an action item then, are we, as a board, saying we would like to send our solicitor to oppose the freestanding sign? Is that a hearing board?
Yes, this point in time, yes.
Okay. So we need a motion to do that?
Okay.
That will second. All right, thank you. Are there any comments from the public? Yes, Steve.
When you go to a lot of these newer shopping centers, signs are more tastefully done. They're not these big things that are stuck all over the place. When you go up to, to Lineville, okay, new shopping center where Target is, I mean, you don't have these humongous signs all over the place. Like when you drive down 95, you know, you get all this stuff off the side of the road. Um, I think there could be some more tastefully done signs here that kind of reflect more of the community. Even in the back, you know, you want to put a sign back there. Do something on brick doors or something like that that looks, looks a little more modern. Say something on steel posts that just, you know, it's, but, but anyway, I, I, you know, I get it, maybe to direct customers for sure.
Now, it's duly noted, Steve. I agree with you. I think, you know, at least in this is my, my opinion. I think in a perfect world, we would have maybe one of those shopping center signs, just one, that has each tenant listed on it like you see at many other shopping centers as opposed to all of these like individual things. And I understand that the way that the ordinance was written and going back many years, it just so happened to be that way. I don't know if there's an option or a chance that we could do something similar to the sign that you're talking about, putting a back of Turner and instead just kind of bringing everything in for one single sign and reducing the signage? I don't know if that's a conversation we can have.
And that was, I was actually just asking, my point is that, I mean, it's something we'd have to look at. Again, I can't tell you right now why because we haven't looked at that. Um, but if we did do that, I still think we would need a variance to exceed the 50 square feet.
If you were to consolidate everything, though?
Right.
I think that would be.
And that's what I wanted to ask, is if we took a look at our current signs, I don't know about Kelly Fitness, but if we, because that's there and it's been there. But if we looked at the existing West Ocean Shopping Center pylon as it is today, but renovated that to include the tenants for on that sign, we would obviously be exceeding 50 square feet. But we would be addressing the concern of having multiple pylons. And would that be something that you would consider supporting that variance?
I would.
Yeah, I think that would be.
I would, as long as the Target sign is not right up, however high that sign is, right up behind the West Ocean Shopping Center, so dominates the whole aerial picture. It has to be closer to the ground even if it's with that same portrait, to my view.
Yeah, would you be talking about adding things to the existing West Ocean Shopping Center sign or taking that down and creating a new sort of lower?
This is just, I know, I know. So honestly, I mean, we would have to look at it and come back. I think, I mean, if we did do that, hopefully, whether you meet before the zoning hearing or next month.
Yeah.
That if the, if we are able to do that, then we would, you know, show that to you because we need to, um, determine direction, location properly anyway. But yes, I mean, we have to look at it. I, I have no idea what that design is going to look like.
So then if you look at that and you come back to us before the zoning hearing board, we would need to send our solicitor to present and.
Get them their application, you'd be looking at it, yeah.
All right, so.
So I understand, so you're going to go back to the zoning board and come up with another application before the zoning hearing board and not proceed with this?
No, they're going to.
Am I going to do evidence?
Okay. No, we're going to remove after tonight. Look at our sign and see if there's something that we can do. We have multiple parties that are involved with that decision. So we need to look at it, see if and how we can design it. And if we're able to, we certainly understand your concern. But rather than not having one at all, we would rather see if we can make this work, come back, present that to you before the hearing.
Great.
And again, the only thing I would ask is if they're all proportionally the same. If you do vote for one sign, then all the businesses are proportionally the same.
Yeah, that's not going to apply for Target, agreed. We'll leave the design, I think, a few to come to us with your design. But I, I hear what you're saying and I don't disagree. I mean, I, I thought too that it was looking very cluttered in that corner with Kelly Fitness and Wells Fargo and all. So, I mean, we have no opposition to that idea at all.
No, and that, and again, I mean, that really goes back to, because I know Chris Robbins has asked several times about putting more than one name on the West Ocean and it was always somehow interpreted, assumed that you couldn't put multiple tenants on a pylon until we just recently came up with this one and said that wasn't the direction we ever had. So now that we understand that, we can go back and we can take a look at that and see if we can come up with a design.
Great.
To manage everything. Don't know that we have much control over the Wells Fargo and the other things. We didn't, we weren't party to those signs. They applied and built those signs. And so we didn't have a right to go down and try to change them.
Could they be put on the, the one sign? Would they be meaningful to be put on the one sign?
Well, we're suggesting replace all those signs.
And keep what they have, but put one sign against all the businesses that are in that shopping center?
Yeah, I mean, that's what we do at all our other shopping centers. Um, that's never been consistent with West Ocean's approach and past as far as our applications go. So I'm not sure what, what the background is on that, but, uh, it's, yeah. We can do it relative to all the new tenants, new tenants.
Yeah.
But we just, I just don't have control over tenants that have leases that are in place and have permits that should come to the town and the town has given them a permit. The town didn't give me a permit for the Wells Fargo sign or the LA Ed's sign. We didn't give them a permit.
Okay, no, I understand.
On our property and we, we approved it, but we weren't party to the permit.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that. I think, though, if we can work maybe together with them and at least make them aware that we're thinking of doing this and come up with a design that we can talk about.
Other solutions.
I appreciate you guys moving over to that, so that's really good. One second, Mark, you go.
Just to summarize, so you're going to proceed with your application before the zoning hearing board? With this application, is that correct?
No, thank you.
We are proceeding with the application that is currently before the zoning hearing board. With the exception of the pylon that we agreed to take a look at and see if we can.
That's the only one you could remove on?
The others, the number of signs in the sign area, we're proceeding with those.
And we as a board are deciding to send our solicitor to oppose that?
We're amending that. We're not going to oppose it because we're going to take a second look at the sign that's being proposed for.
Well, your, no, your motion was that if they don't change it, the pylon sign that they are proposing, you oppose. If they, between now and the zoning hearing board, go back to you and revise sign, you will evaluate that revised sign and decide if you're going to change your motion.
Right.
But as far as the rest of the application, the board does not, is not taking the position to oppose any of the other variances or any of the other signs. Is that an accurate statement of the board's position? Okay.
There was a motion there. There was a motion and a second on the board.
Okay, is there any public comment?
I just had a quick question. In fact, did I see a sign proceeding as a C5? There were in the document, okay.
There are tenets on the document.
We'll take a vote then, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, question passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to agenda item number seven, discussion regarding the following proposed amendments to township's land use ordinances. First is zoning ordinance amendment to permit motorcycle sales and service in the I-2 light industrial district. Should we take these on my line?
Uh, yes. Would you like me to bring a summary of this one?
Sure.
Madam Chair, before the board this evening, there's a proposed zoning ordinance amendment for the I-2 light industrial district. Uh, the proposed amendment would add motorcycle sales and service as a permitted use by conditional use in the I-2 light industrial district. Currently, this use is only permitted in the C-5 general highway commercial district, um, where it is also permitted by conditional use in the district. Uh, the proposed amendment was reviewed by the land planning committee at their meeting on December 12, 2023, where it was recommended to proceed forward. And at the aforementioned meeting, a proposed tenant for the currently vacant site Kelly Sports is interested in purchasing this property for this use. Uh, they did provide proposed renderings, uh, which are identical to what was submitted at the land planning committee. Uh, I also provided to the board a copy of the zoning map showing the I-2 light industrial district, which is fairly dispersed in different areas of the township. Um, if the board is amenable to the proposed amendment, the next step would be to have proposed ordinance reviewed by both the county and township planning commission as required by the municipality's planning code and advertised for public review.
All right, thanks very much, Chris.
I'll turn it over to you, again, yes, again. Gina Gruber, I'm here on behalf of the petitioner, so is Ann Harley-Davison. So I'm joined this evening by Tom Hanum, who, if you would humor us for a moment, we kind of wanted to give you an idea of what the overall intention is for this property and why we filed this petition to amend your zoning ordinance to permit this use of the I-2 district. So as Chris indicated, we are introducing motorcycle sales and retail use into this district. Um, it is currently within the C-5 district. The property that we had in mind for relocating in the existing Kelly's and supporting the property on Mr. Kelly's evening as well. Um, just in the event that you're wondering whether or not the seller was up for it. So.
Sorry, where is Mr.? Thank you for coming.
So this is approximately 2.7 acres. Um, this is a zoning ordinance to permit the new use. It also allows this use to go forward on this property in compliance with the existing area involved in setback apartments in the I-2 district. So there would be compliance with the separate requirements that are separate from the C-5 for this use because this is a property that's already existing. They're going to utilize the existing building, um, which I think is a good thing, to be honest. I mean, to not have new development and disturbing them or utilizing the building to fund something there. But I'm going to turn it over to Tom so that I don't run a lot too long here and let him give you a little flavor of what they're anticipating doing on this property so that you can have the ordinance in context.
Thank you very much for us being able to come in front of you guys. We only need eight pylon signs, so. No, we don't need any, we just need the one that's existing. But, um, so we have, Tom's my sister and Tom went to Westchester Henderson. I went to Westchester, he's worked in the area, John, that has a couple of Tish stores in Westchester. So we love the Westchester community. We've been in business since 1954. Our current location in Middletown Township and Media. And, um, we've expanded since then. Now we have six Harley-Davison dealerships around the tri-state area, Electric City and Scranton, Rawaway, and Freedom Valley, Lancaster Harley, and Brandywell and Media. So we were part of a consolidation with Harley-Davison where they had 700 stores and they wanted to get down to around 450. So we agreed to be a part of that consolidation. If you may have known Chester, Scranton, Harley-Davison was up under 100. Valley, Cleveland, Harley-Davison. And they took the buyout and went away and we wanted to stay in the Harley-Davison business. So we said that we would consolidate our two locations, Media, Chatsworth into one nice facility. Those facilities are both around 20,000 square feet, so none of them met the requirement. We consolidated the one to the other of those two locations. So this is our, our third property. To be real honest, we had a property of Route 1 and 322 that we were, had originally purchased. It was just land. And before COVID started, as prices went from $100 a square foot to 300, that just went right out of our price range at around 15 million. The building wound up. So that was with Conquer Township. We did get approved through them initially. And then we moved down the road to Bethel Township and found it in an existing building, which was much more affordable for us to buy in Bethel Township. And we currently own that building and we've been approved through Bethel Township, um, which was great. They were, both townships were really great to work with. And then we found out that the Kelly building went on the market for sale. And we called Steve. This was the location that we would have loved to have had from the very beginning. We kind of put the brakes on the Maple Zone building to see if here in the 11th hour that we could possibly come and make things work. And Steve and I have grown up together, Tom and Karen Kelly were roommates in college, so our families are very close. And we, um, love this area and we worked out a deal with the building, so with Steve, which was great. And we just, we love to be great members of the community at our Brandywell location. We've been involved with the Brandywell Battlefield reenactment every year and all the many things that they do on that township. We do children's hospital rides at our Broadway store. We raise $100,000 every year for the children's hospital and provide many things for the kids. Uh, we do a lot of things in the community, maybe not as much as the Kelly Sporting Store used to do, with Kelly Fields and everything. They were very good neighbors in the community. But, um, you know, so that's a little bit about where we are. I know it's been a very long evening, so I'm trying to keep it short for you guys. But, um, so that's where we are. And we do have the Maple Zone building still under contract and everything kind of waiting there of things that didn't work out here. We are kind of at the end of our rope with asking for extensions with Harley-Davison. We're a very seasonal buil- business. And our hope would be is to be able to get through the township and hopefully have our, our permits to do the renovations in April or May. And we look to move in, um, in October and November of this year in the off-season of our business so that we can get used to the facility before the spring would come the following year. So if there's any possible way that this is doable, um, the building is perfect the way it is. We don't need any land development. We don't need to break the footprint of the property. Harley's design, we have, we've been spending money currently to do the entire inside with their design firms. We've spent probably 30 or 40,000 dollars on the inside. It isn't finished yet, but, um, it's pretty much, probably be finished in another couple of weeks. So we're just thinking positively that, that this would all go through because of the timeframe that we're trying to work within. So we can ask, answer questions or remember you guys, where you have it or think. And that's about where we're at.
Do you, or do you stay open? I'm sorry. Do you stay open during your off-season? The building itself stays open?
A lot of our stores before COVID were seven days a week and now we're a five-day work week because we have a lot of respect for our families at work, for all of our dealerships. And having a five-day work week and then having Sundays and Mondays off is just great relief for them. And it's been very advantageous for everybody coming out of COVID. We're a five-day work week currently. We'd like to be open seven.
Oh, you're, oh, you're, oh, months, okay. I didn't know if you closed on your off months or. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
So, um, obviously I had a chance to see this when I was a member of the land planning committee, so I'm already kind of familiar with what, what's being requested. I just want to double check. So this is a, it would be a conditional use? It's going to be added in conditional use, okay. And then the parking requirement, section 8455. So that specific use and the number of parking spaces, is that consistent with other types of vehicle sales and service requirements? Or is it different for motorcycles?
We may not have that defined, so.
Um, our associate, Ronnie Curlong, did a lot of work on the proposed amendment. We'll start with her. Sure.
So, um, hi, my name is Ronnie Curlong. Gina said I'm one of her associates. In terms of the, the parking requirement, um, your ordinance has a parking requirement for, I don't have the language in front of me right now, but it's like the sale of non-perishable goods, um, which includes in its definition motor vehicle sales. So like a car dealership would fall under that category. Um, it requires five parking spaces per 1,000 square feet. Um, and also when there's a vehicle service bag for a motor vehicle, it would require two parking spaces per service bag. Our thought process here is that motorcycles are at least half the size of a typical motor vehicle. Um, and so the parking requirement could be cut in half.
Isn't there a ton of parking in this location already? Yes, how many parking lots? I can't imagine.
Both of our other stores, our Media and Chatsworth store have about, I think, 23 or 27. And this has 50 or so.
Yes, it, it would be, it would be more than double what you had in the past. The, the, the only problem is that if the entire building were categorized as this sale of non-perishable goods, which it was not under Kelly Sports. Under Kelly Sports, it was warehousing use, which had a lower parking requirement. If you took the five spaces per 1,000, there would not be enough parking spaces here. Essentially, it would be non-conforming.
Okay, so this 2.5 would be conforming then, Curlong? Okay.
And is that something that, as far as, so obviously you have ordinances that sort of sometimes are made up, to be quite honest, you know, planners don't always know and industries change. But as far as your business that you know the best of, is 2.5 for 1,000 square feet pretty? Is that a comfortable number for you that you feel it has demand and has cushion?
We have, our Broadway store has about 27 parking spots. And that's, every store is about the same situation except for Electric City has a lot of parking and Langister as well. as well. But the parking that's there is fantastic. We like get two or three customers at a time that come in and go out Saturdays, a lot of times it's motorcycles most of the time, or a car, and then hopefully that turns into a motorcycle. So, yeah, so we feel more than happy to that, it's more than sufficient parking that's there. And it's very interesting because in some townships we're working similar tractors and things of that nature, and then other townships we're considered automotive. But unlike the car business, they put 9% of their stuff outside and 10% inside, we're 90% inside, 10% outside.
So is your inventory on site?
Yeah, everything's inside the store. We do like to put bikes outside during the day, you know, a little bit, like Dad just will always say, you know, if you put them outside, people stop and look, but everything comes back inside at night time as well.
So are we talking about then, is there an opportunity to reduce the parking, or are we just saying that there's more than enough parking?
There's more than enough.
There's, yeah, there's definitely more than enough, we may be willing to reduce the parking requirement here if that's something that could work.
Well, just to, it's a lot of impervious surface that won't be used, if there's an opportunity to just turn that back into grass or planting?
We do have events like the charity, like the children's hospital ride, we do it Broadway in Jersey. It's been going on for 25 years, all the buyer companies, all the police organizations from Raway all the way down to Woodsboro, so it's a children's hospital or blah. And I mean, it's really amazing, it is, a lot of motorcycles and that bad event, but I mean, we basically raise $100,000 for kids. It was so large that the tractor trailers and tools were too much for one year, so we started doing wish lists, where they would get $25,000 cash, we'd also buy laptops for the kids.
So you're saying you need the parking?
Parking for events would be, you know, we do need it, we don't want to take any apart.
Just a question on that. So since you have a kind of excess space, impervious surface, excess space, would joining the conditional use here, you'd be amenable to a condition that says you won't have some other business activity using excess space? So you won't start subcontracting for U-Haul trailers to be left on these parking spaces you don't really need, etc.?
Not now, Sean. We're going to do that business. Is there any?
And we would agree to that condition.
Okay.
Ryan would.
I see businesses around the place that have roll-off containers, and I don't know what's in them, but they're there for a long time, they sit on parking lots, and then the quality is?
Good thing you have Shelby here to now enforce that.
You've got the quality.
We're not going to mess with Shelby.
Very good.
All right, so existing footprint stays the same, this will not go through the land development process?
Yes, we would never have the time, I mean, we have to do this, if we don't get in someplace by November 1st by Harley, we go into bad standings, they start taking holdback money back from us, this has been going on for three years, and they're at the end. The president of the company lives in Philadelphia, he loved this location, he made exceptions for us to stall everything at Bethel Township and to come and give us an opportunity, they loved this location so much.
So understand that the ordinance and the conditional use process is going to take at least four months, so I don't know if you realize that.
Now, the other two stores, where you had 20,000 square footage, are they closing?
Uh, yes, they are.
Okay, so that's part of the consolidation.
Yes.
Is the board at all, would they ever consider not having it be by conditional use, or just have it by right use? Meaning, what would we need to do to do that? Would you have a change? In a different section?
A different section.
In a different section.
The only reason why I'm hesitant to do that is because when we discussed this as a land planning committee, because of the way this zoning is scattered throughout the township, there are parts, there are parts of this I, whatever it is, zoning, I-2, that are but residential neighborhoods. So once you permit a use by right, then you have some.
You have to comply everywhere else.
I agree, Sean, I agree.
Except as the way it's worded, it says that the law of which the use of roads is not above residential zoning districts.
Right.
So you're not even allowed to have it used if it does.
If it's across the street from a residential area, maybe we have some conditional requirements, and their by, initial use process might still be, is a better way to go.
And that's also how it's allowed in the C-5, general highway commercial district, by conditional use.
Okay. Be consistent. Well, your timeline, you said you want to start things up in April or May.
If we were under the impression that if we came this evening and if things went well, we'd then come back on the 13th of February, and then the 20th of February as well for another meeting after that.
We have to then an ordinance to the county planning commission, it's a third area review period by the county planning, as well as their planning. If the ordinance is adopted, then you have to follow conditional use, and there's hearing process for that. I mean, you could, if you're willing to go forward, allow them to submit a conditional use application and sort of consolidate the hearings, the hearing on the text amendment to the conditional use hearing.
We can talk about that at the land planning committee, to try to consolidate the timeline.
Is the board comfortable with that? I think the applicant would prefer to move forward in that fashion. So in the absence of both conditional use and the ordinance, at the same time? Yeah, we have to wait five days after the ordinance is adopted before they can actually do the approval of the conditional use, but we might have that anyway.
And no, we appreciate the discussion, obviously. I guess in terms of a timeline, if you were to authorize this to be sent to the county planning commission now, would you consider adding here maybe at your March fifth meeting? That would give a 30-day timeline for both of those entities to review.
As long as you guys are broken away to support it, set it like this.
Typically, at least in the last couple of conditional use requirements, have separate meetings, but for this one, I think we could do it on a regular meeting. Chris, I'm looking at you as to whether you think that's what you want.
I would think so, they're not proposing any planned development.
No pilots? I'm going to respect this to the board. Oh, cool.
Yeah, I think, I think this would be a fairly straightforward conditional use hearing.
All right, so we'll just plan accordingly and?
We just had a dealership in, we put Centerboro, Westchester back in 19, when was it, 98, 97, 96, and that's what we had, a Honda and Kawasaki motorcycle dealership there, it was great, and we were moving that to Route 1 and 202, and Harley offered us the second location there, so.
Okay, so is the motion then going to be to send this to? Authorize it moving forward to the procedural requirement, and to allow the applicant to follow conditional use as well as pending ordinance? All right, who wants to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right, thanks, do we have a second?
I'll say.
I'll say.
Any public comment or questions on the motion? Yes, Jeff?
I took one back in the lane, next to, go back to motorcycle shop. It wasn't fine, a little noise, and the motorcycle run a hood, a lot next door. How, is there going to be noise here?
Well, I can only tell you from examples, and we're at Brandywine, we have apartment complex across the store, across the street, we've never had one situation with noise whatsoever, and the church on the Loop Road has been sunned over a dozen times for noise ordinances because of air horns and whistles. And so the church gets in trouble, but we've never been in trouble, and I think our noise kind of just settles right now.
Aren't these hard with A's?
They are, but you look at our Broadway store, we literally have homes 10 feet from our property line, and nobody ever complains, we get along great with our communities, if there's ever been a road that we test ride on that there's been a problem, we change the course and don't go there anymore if anybody has a problem with it. So we work with the community the very best we can, but, and now we're going to a lot of electric motorcycles, and you go racing, it's all electric everywhere, the kids are all riding electric, Harley makes electric motorcycles, so, you know, the day of the combustible engine is probably, you know, not too far away, it'll be a nice thing.
And you'll need to comply with our noise ordinances anyway.
Anyway, yeah.
This is a 202, Madalac, it's probably the noisiest place in the whole township.
Are you considering EV chargers on your property?
We have them now at our Brandywine location, so we probably have one here as well, we're probably here down there.
Good answer.
Yes, a motor one.
Wait, for motors?
They work for motorcycle cars.
They do.
They have the same one, we have cars that pull off people's cars, recharge them.
Great, that's good to hear. Marty?
I just wanted to say this sounds like a really exciting development, this house we have a lot of community support, and I think it's why the city board is moving to help them expedite this through the process as much as possible.
Thank you, that would be so helpful. Yes, thank you very much. Because we really want to do this in a great spot, we'd love to get a great neighborhood.
We all agree, we all agree with you. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Oh, we have a table, yes. Okay, all in favor, and to promote the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so moving on to the next amendment, the zoning ordinance amendment pertaining to the historic in-use in the R3B Flexible Design Conservation District, Zone C. Do you want to introduce this? Chris, and Shelby?
Madam Chair, first, this item before the board this evening is the proposed zoning ordinance amendment pertaining to the historic in-use in the R3B Flexible Design Conservation Districts in the C. This pertains to the proposed rehabilitation of the existing Graystone Hall. By way of background information, the board approved an amendment to the zoning ordinance in 2022 in order to allow historic in-use in the zoning district by conditional use. Township was approached by a potential operator, Mirbo? Is that what you mean? Mirbo. About amending the existing ordinance pertaining to the height and the number of rooms. We provided a copy of the proposed ordinance and the presentation materials that were presented to the land planning committee. This was reviewed by them in November of 2023, and they then recommended for that.
The land planning committee recommended it for what?
Correct.
Hi, good evening, Jonathan Gerber from MacGraven Harvey here, Jonathan Delphos, my client's principal. Have been to land planning committee, we have been to the planning commission. There are, I have hard materials if you'd like them, but I think that Brian has everything on, very, very quick fingers on the mouse. So Jonathan can talk a lot about the project in general if you want to put it into some context. I think for my purposes to be brief, the ordinance currently allows for 60 rooms for the historic in-use, we're looking for 80. The ordinance currently has a height restriction of 35, we're asking for 40. And the, the planning commission had recommended that there be some additional language in addition to what we proposed, making certain, suggesting that the, however high it is, that it not be taller than the mansion, which makes sense. And I think we were fine with solicitor proposed a language back just that I think we're okay with. Our concern was that just creating more work for Shelby with, anytime you use the word height, it's a defined term, and the way height is used in your ordinance is relative to the grade. So you can have something that is at the bottom of a hill, be higher for purposes of the ordinance than something on the hill next to it, because it's by grade. So I don't think that we really, we certainly have no intention of building anything that looks like it towers above the mansion. It would please the board, I'd like to have Jonathan just kind of walk you through a little bit of the project in general without, I know it's late, but.
No, we are.
And we're all here, and sort of talk about what his company does and what they plan to do with this project.
Sure.
Good evening, this is Chris Benjamin, my name is Jonathan Delphos, Vice President General Counsel for the B World Companies. So, so we are a boutique and spa company, we're a small, family-owned, majority-owned, and operated company from upstate New York. Our first property was built in 2000 in our hometown of Skene House, New York, the Big Works region. I believe there's a photo of it running through the next slide. That's our first property in Skene House, New York. Our properties are all similar in concept in that they are, I guess they're luxury in terms of four-star hotel, spa, restaurant, and some retailers as well. So that was our first property built in 2000, our second in 2014. It's about 40 minutes south of Boston, in the Brooklyn community. And then our, so what we're doing here is just kind of showing the rendering versus the actual built properties. So that's, that's a view of the property compared to the rendering, we're just kind of showing you that what we represent, you know, in early phases of the process is the fact that we intend to construct our context as I will do it. So this is our third resort property that was constructed in 2019, I should say, that was opened in 2019 in Ryenbeck, New York, that's in the Hudson Valley. We are presently working and breaking ground on our most recent project in Beacon, New York, about an hour south of that, about an hour and a half north of Kier City, in the Hudson Valley. And that property will be 75 rooms, 78 keys, 75 keys, 78 rooms, and that's a 70, or excuse me, 65 key property, also a historic rehabilitation, there's a mansion right there, it's built in 1859, for an individual civil war general actually, and so that'll be rehabilitated in accordance with the National Park Service standards, which we intend to raise some home as well. So right now we are, we presently have a purchase contract with that property, we intend to construct, you know, a private spa, a similar concept to what we've done in the past, and bring it to the West Ocean, to the Westchester communities. So as you may know, it's a 44-acre historic property, it's beautiful, rolling hills and woods, and we think it'd be a great home for our next retirement. The Garian family actually proposed a kind of a concept plan a few years ago, in that process they received, you know, some zoning amendments that provided for 60 rooms and revive height. That was a great plan, as you can see here, that was the original plan. We kind of look at things a little bit different way, you know, our concept is maybe a little bit different than this. This kind of spreads out the building, the new buildings across kind of multiple areas and maybe disturbs more of the site. We would kind of favor preserving the nature of the land a little bit more by consolidating those new building areas, as you can see, we're proposing a kind of a central spa building with two rooms above it, that's really important to our concept, is that our spa is on the lowest level, and then there's two guest rooms above it, so that will create three floors, and that's kind of one of the reasons that we were seeking a modification of zoning that restricts it to two stories right now. In that zoning, or that stack, that building stacked because of the floor-to-ceiling heights, our architects are recommending, you know, 40 keys, actually it's a vice rather than 35 because of the different grade on that basement level.
Just to point this out too, what being shown here is the contrast between the Garian plan, which is in blue, and which sort of drove previous text amendment versus what's in red, which is more of a concept. And as you can see, one of the areas is keeping any development on the lawn properly from the gray stone, which was a great base that he proposed. The main building with the rooms and the spa is closer to the mansion itself.
Is it the red building that has?
Yes.
Yes, the larger red one, that's next to the sort mansion, and then the other smaller red squares are, would be independent cottages. Brian, if you want to move to the next ones, it kind of shows the building height components in the?
This one?
Yeah. That's a good, that's a good one is to just land on, let me touch on this.
Here, not that one here, not this, this one right here.
Yeah, so this just shows that room stack that I was speaking of, or the floor stack in terms of that basement level, which would be partially, partially at grade on the interior and then below grade on the exterior side, so that it would present as basically one level with, and then the second floor would be within the roof, which you can see on that white side, just a concept sketch that shows that it wouldn't present as some on that white side, just a concept sketch that shows that it wouldn't present as some large 40-level building. It could really kind of show as one and a half because the level grade would be very on the grid.
This is how your, shows how your grade and your stories are calculated based upon these other definitions, four-story, height, and grade.
I should mention, I need to mention it when I was laughing at the beginning, but the other thing that's being requested is texting, is whether it's the floor, maybe it's total height, it's not a force, whether something's a basement, whether it's being used isn't necessarily.
We don't see that in what's
I'm sorry.
Okay, this is 40 feet rather than two.
We used to refer to stories.
Is there an entrance into that basement floor? Or do you, do you enter it from like the second floor and go down? Is it a walkout?
A courtyard, right? Yeah, that would be on the interior. So, you know, there's, there's certainly going to be some kind of putting that would allow guests to move from that spa to kind of that middle campus area, but it would definitely not be an exterior entrance. The exterior entrance would be a grade above, it would be from kind of the first floor.
Just so the board understands, the, the lower level would be open to the front facing the lawn, the backside along the current access roads where the one and a half, the two stories would be, so the opening is towards the lawn.
Yeah, and again, you know, don't, this isn't meant to be literal in terms of exactly what we're proposing. Anything that's kind of should be understood as sort of a concept in terms of what a room looks like on the side. It shouldn't be too far off, but it's just, it's not, you know, it's a big word.
And it is conditional use in this zoning district, so we get to know each other well.
Not at all. All right, so wait, talk to me about the 35 versus the 40 again.
Yeah, so because of the different, the variation in grades, you know, the definition of height is taken from the average grade of the lowest level to the median of the roof, is actually the pitch group. And so because of that grade variation, our architects are very uncomfortable that 35 would be too low to get our, as you can see, can't really see it in management terms with the height is, but basically they can get it under 40, but 35 would be challenging to get, to meet that definition for us.
Because of the grade and now you have three stories, there's both the front and the two in the back, our definition of height
Pairs.
It's, they penalize them for having a walkout.
Yeah. But the total height will be
Less than, less than.
The man in?
Yes, so the dark blue line you see here, this is the, this is the projected mansion roof line. This is the roof, the ridge line of the mansion. They projected it over and they're showing that the bridge line and the peak of their roof, they're showing this light blue line just below. So that's what the ordinance reads, that their peak can, must be lower.
Yeah, that's, that's a presently submitted, you know, request of ordinance which has that, that mention of height.
Right, so after the planning commission comments, we worked with Charlie, said that the change would be that the, that would read maximum building height for new buildings, 40 feet, however, cannot exceed the highest peak on the historic roof and historic end.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, we, you know, it's, that's one of the comments we made at the land planning committee is that under no circumstance, one for all, you know, case of opinion, new builds on historic sites should never in any way dominate aesthetically historic mansion. We want that to stand and be the crown jewel. And then the National Park Service would even let you from their historic standards anyway, so. It's, so from our perspective, if it's needed, doesn't violate that anyway, so the only thing we just want to make sure was a language in terms of height doesn't restrict, you know, the present definitions of height. It's understood that we're talking about the mansion's height, peak height in absolute terms. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I don't know how the letters
For the entire property.
Yeah, right.
It was like sea level.
Yeah, right, yeah. Well, I mean, personally speaking, I, I don't have a problem with that. I understand why you're asking for that.
Just that one question. The existing ordinance will ask for 60 guest rooms, can you increase it to 80? What's the reasoning behind that?
Yeah, you know, unfortunately, I think we're all well aware inflation is running by all the past few years, I mean, compared to our 2019 property, inflation, our construction costs dropped over 40%. And in order to have, you know, a rich bonus, you can attract any kind of investment and get any kind of lending for a property like this, it has to, six rooms, just unfortunately are just a point in the economy of property. It needs an extra 20 rooms to attract a lot of return or, you know, a successful venture.
And that is including the cottages that you're proposing?
Yes, yeah, everything on that, the plan that shows in red
Yeah, and two rooms above the spa.
Two floors above the spa.
With our guest rooms.
Yeah, so here's the guest, here's the proposed guest room count. So the spa building would have 33 rooms, 28 in the cottages, two in the existing garage back here, nine in the existing carriage house, then they're going to have eight in the mansion.
Yeah, I mean, so it looks like a much smaller footprint, I guess, than the original development plan as far as previous coverage.
Exactly, I guess.
What do you anticipate, your percentage of occupancy at, at average at most times? I know you want 100%.
Yeah, ideally. You know, properties, typically, you know, hospitality properties end up somewhere in the low 70s. When you start getting higher that, then that it'll start burning out facilities aggressively. That accounts for seasonality, you know, where if you have 100% occupancy on weekends and other days, you know, 20, 30. So it'll tend to average out in the low 70s.
And it's a stable
But there's a ramp up period over the first, call it five years.
Yeah, and as far as you're going to do the managing of it, just the restoration?
No, we, we develop only in operating properties already.
One of the big things we had at the land planning committee was a lot of neighborhood residents wanted to do a restaurant.
I'm sure. So would the increase in rooms then mean increase in parking spaces that you'd need?
Yeah, of course, we, you know, plan to meet the total requirement to the parking. Unfortunately, we have a lot of area on property to do that. We are absolutely interested in making sure that's as buffered and protected as possible. We don't like excess parking actually in our, in our beacon property. The, the town boards actually wanted us to reduce below the minimum for parking, which is something we've never come across before, but we have to have a parking for our guests and so we don't want to overpark it like it's maybe
So is that situation potentially going to exist here? I don't know what our ordinance requires for this district, but you know, if it's two for every room and you say, look, we need 160 spaces, we, you know, I don't know what it is, but could we potentially look at a variance that says, let's, you know, meet whatever you need, but have less parking than our ordinance requires?
Yeah, I think that's something we could look at. Unfortunately, we, the guests are blended into traffic before they have to exit the car as well, is that maybe it's not independent guests, they come to our restaurant, hotel, spa all the time, you know, a lot of times it's the same person, regardless of whether they're coming there. So I think a blended analysis is probably a wise approach, at least sort of open it out, so we just need to park our guests if we can't have equal
Is the restaurant located inside, where is the restaurant located?
Yeah, that'll be located in the condominiums of the mansion.
In the mansion, in the existing mansion? So the restaurant, if they are just coming to eat, they would just use the hotel parking and mansion parking right there?
Yes.
And how many employees is the, working there?
It'll be, have the full-time equivalent of about, well, I shouldn't say full-time equivalent, it'll have around 100 employees, actually a little bit more, probably 125 employees.
So you'd need additional parking for them as well?
Sure.
So the parking requirements in the current zoning ordinance require historic in the following the requirements for a hotel, which are one per unit plus four per 50 units plus spaces required for ancillary uses. So they'll have to account for parking for the spa use, the restaurant, bar, all of those things.
Okay, and I did have another question as far as just kind of maneuvering around the property, as far as pedestrians are concerned, what's the plan for sidewalks and the, you know, attaching these different areas together? And also, is there any attachment to the neighboring community of Graystone?
Yeah, I know there's an extensive network of trails and systems on this plan, and I think we're still, I think everyone should have their own property in our trail networks which haven't been developed really yet, they will be, and I certainly anticipate they'll be tiny for each other.
Actually, as far as sidewalks, they can, they can still use trails as long as they have the right surface for ADA access from parking lots. You don't have to put in concrete sidewalks and curbs.
Really?
They can use an ADA approved, or ADA accessible surface and use it more as a trail and keep it more naturalized.
True.
But it's still going to be painted for concrete because of surface, it's just going to be a standard sidewalk on the edge of the driveway.
Okay.
That's all going to be handled through the development.
Yeah, sure, right.
And then also the building, you know, also looks at it for action items.
Okay. So then our action item tonight is to approve this ordinance to move forward. To move forward with the process, okay. And do we need to vote on that?
Yes.
Okay. So then, is there a motion to move forward with this process?
I'll make that motion to move forward with this process.
Okay, is there a second? I'll second it. Is there any public comment?
Yeah.
Yes.
When you say move forward, you mean it's going to come before the planning commission again?
Right.
So the proposed ordinance would go to the county planning commission or the attached planning commission and have to be advertised accordingly for a public hearing?
Okay, no. Does this, how would be original conditional use or part of that land wasn't developed and part of it was allowed?
So you're saying restricted area?
Yeah.
So that's, that's shown in this plan actually.
Yeah, this is, this lot was allowed to be kept in historic.
This is, this is, there's one here, and then there's one here that's, that's de-restricted and has open space.
And then you can see as well that the buffers got the, Brian showed it on the property right now, there's
This is one of the pieces, this is their piece, this is another piece, and then the red is the, is the buffer from, probably up there. Okay, so there's a compliance with that.
Yes.
And Doug, that was an analyzing that originally came before the board back in 2022.
Thanks, Matt. Any other questions?
I have a comment. Unlike a previous applicant, I'd like to see this one breaks, breaks on a little bit just because I still think that the trails, the old space needs to be completed and dedicated to the township before any other development is approved for this site. An area is still owned over 100 sites, there are more sites that need to be built on, and I'm just afraid, I mean, they backed out, they haven't come through on so many of the promises that they, they told us they could do when the township created the NID. I, I just think they need to follow through when the business of their work and do what they were supposed to do in this project, kind of go to the township.
This is a completely separate
This is a very different entity. RLD is the developer of Graystone, with, with the Graystone. This is a separate lot that the Durakian family owns, and probably will have other buildings built already with this entity, so they're two completely different things. And to Dr. White's comment, conditional use order specifically allowed this, this lot, the manor lot, I think would refer to that. So there's nothing in that real conditional use decision that deals with this particular historic mansion and this order, so it's two separate things.
I have a comment, Chester County D's today, and if you pull up the area name, I think the way the, the agreement that the Durakians have with RLD spells out at what time frames Durakian is going to sell to
Right, but as far as the township is concerned, township is only in privy of contract with the developer, which is RLD. So there's no contract with the Durakian family to develop the property. All the development agreements and all the land development plans and all the contractual obligations to do the things that we're asking them to do are all through the developer, RLD, not the Durakian family.
Another comment, I mean, I, there's no doubt, it looks like it's going to be a beautiful development, but again, when family first came to the township, it was 17 or 18 rooms in the mansion, and so it was still going to be this little country in, have you, and then we just needed a few more off-site rooms to make it viable. Now with this plan now, the 78, the mansion is down to eight or nine rooms. So I'm just looking at it, it's, it's changing the whole request from the initial time, or then it gets disappeared from here. So just wanted to
Thank you.
Oh, and also, this one is where the residents that purchased within 500 feet of the country house estate, a disclosure statement needed to be provided to respect the buyers within the whole community for lots within 500 feet of the country house estate. With these new rooms, are there going to be more residents that are within 500 feet that never got this disclosure and signed off the disclosure that created an issue to save the money?
I don't understand what you're talking about.
What that condition was referring to was that residents in the 598-unit development who are within 500 feet
Yes.
Get that of the country estate. But the entire lot, it's not of a specific building, somebody
I'm, I'm
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second, right? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. We just send a dedication to the
Absolutely.
Okay. And moving on to the subdivision and land development ordinance amendment pertaining to the installation of electric vehicle charging stations.
So Madam Chair, before the board this evening is continued discussion regarding proposed amendment to the township subdivision and development ordinance pertaining to electric vehicle charging stations. An amendment to the township's land use ordinance is pertaining to EV charging stations as previously discussed at various meetings of the board, most recently on December 19th, as well as by the SAC, most recently on November 20th. The proposed ordinance before the board had been revised based on the discussion at the aforementioned meetings. This proposed ordinance would only impact those projects that meet the definition of subdivision and land development. I know there had been discussion previously regarding such items as, you know, rehabilitating a garage or like a new single-family residence. Those items don't meet the definition of land development either under our ordinance or through the, or through the state law. And I provided the definitions of land development and subdivision from the, from our ordinance. As this is a land use ordinance, much like the other ones that were discussed, it would have to go through the township and the county planning commission review prior to adoption.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Does the board have any comments or questions regarding this ordinance?
I do have a few.
All right, go ahead, Tina.
Okay, the first one is under Section 2B, electric vehicle readiness requirements. Do we need a definition for readiness? I don't see anywhere where it's defined.
Well, there's, under the definitions, there's readiness levels, so that's really just a sort of title to deal with the more specific standards that was actually defined here.
Yeah, it says EV ready to, and then the definition, I think that's it.
Okay, sufficient, okay. Okay, sufficient, okay. Under the next category, which is B, and then it lists all the way to H. Should we list an I there for retail?
No, that's, this was specific uses where they felt that they wanted, there was going to be people parking for longer periods of time. Retail is where people don't park there long enough, they worry about having to be. They're looking at places where people park for longer periods of time. Where it makes sense to have somebody who's going in and working at, you know, a hospital for an eight-hour shift. If that's there, it's where you're going to want your space. If somebody parks for a long period of time. Retail, where you're just going in and out for Target, they're not as concerned about having that space and ready.
Is a gym considered retail?
No, that's a different case.
Or even the employees in the retail, if they're there eight hours, they could be using it.
Number two, for all non-residential development.
Oh, other than those listed?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So yeah, that would, retail, all the else is picked up in two.
Okay.
Section one, they want twenty percent, it's twenty percent.
Right, yes. So these uses is twenty percent.
There's more spaces for one.
That was the.
Two, everything else is non-residential, that's one, ten percent.
Exactly.
Okay, and then in five, under that same category, B five, I think we have the words new in two, three, four. We have nothing whether it's new or existing in number five. Well, is it new or existing developments? I think it's implied, I don't.
I don't even think you need the word new anywhere because this is a subdivision ordinance that only applies when someone submits an application.
Yes.
It should be consistent, whatever we do, whether it's new in everyone or whether it's new at all. Five doesn't have.
I want to think about that because I even wonder if you need new in any of it because I guess the question is if you take a building, so for example, the Kelly Sporting Goods, which is being retrofitted into, that's not going to be made.
Greystone Inn might be a good example of that. Because that's going to have to go early in development, or Farm and Lock, that's going to have to go early in development.
Yes, that's where, that's where that would be considered new, for redevelopment.
So five would be just for new?
And actually, I mean, Tina, I mean, five is really just saying, five sort of follows up everything else. Because it's basically saying if there's, if there's residential and non-residential, you're accumulating it.
I just don't know if it's new or existing developments.
Well, well, existing developments wouldn't apply because if it's existing, if it's existing, they wouldn't have to do anything. If it's new, if it's a redevelopment, it's still technically considered a new development because it would have to go through a redevelopment process. And I think that this is implying if someone takes like a, a person, if someone would take like a, do like a mixed-use development with like retail.
I honestly think the B, one, two, and three, you can get rid of the word new because it is, this ordinance is only applying when you have somebody submitting a new development to you. And with the word redevelopment, so I think we get rid of the word.
I think it, I think it gives people pause though when they see that if you put any, if you, if you were to put for any multifamily dwelling development, at least twenty percent must be, or a minimum of one parking space should be EV. Like I think people are going to think.
Actually, you're never going to look at this ordinance unless you're submitting a subdivision land development. Where, just think about the context of where this ordinance is.
Yeah, no, I know that the people that are submitting the land development ordinance, the only ones that are going to see this. But I think that, I mean, I know that we have some residents that have already taken sort of issue with the fact that, does this mean that, if you're passing this, does this mean that if I have to do this, like in the house that I already live in?
No.
Well, we know that. What I'm saying is that.
It's like a clear.
Your order defines it, it's not only your new developments. And it's our, and a single-family house doesn't meet your definition.
Okay, I mean, look, I.
You know all that information, but if I'm picking this up as a resident, they.
We can put the word new in five if that would make sense. That's the consistency that you want.
Yeah, just consistent.
Yeah, it's not a problem, I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And then the last thing I have is after the next category. It seems like we're following like on C two, and then we go to three. And didn't we leave out four from the previous page? Because we're kind of repeating what's in B. But we didn't add four in there. We did two, three, and five, but we didn't add four in that category. I'm just wondering why we didn't.
If we're not requiring the charging station for, what's identifying four?
Four was.
C deals with charging station installations.
Left out four.
Two, B is electrical vehicle ready. So four is the subdivision land development paragraph of the chart.
And four deals specifically with single-family dwelling units where like, you have like seven lots of division where you have new single-family dwelling units. These sections all talk about land uses with a certain number of proposed parking spaces. You're not going to have that with a single-family dwelling. You're going to have.
Parking and a garage around here.
Well, four is subdivision.
But again, a subdivision is generally going to be, a subdivision is generally going, a subdivision land development, when they're proposing a residential subdivision, is residential units. You're not going to have like parking requirements like you would for a shopping center where there's going to be a minimum of ten spaces. Because all of these requirements here, setting with at least ten proposed parking spaces, that's not applicable in this situation.
Okay.
I have a question. Who's going to be responsible for leasing the EV stations? Meaning if somebody with the conventional vehicle parks in these spaces, is there going to be a fine or anything for that?
No, that's all, that would all, they're all being on private property, so it would have to be handled by the land owner themselves.
Section of D, electric vehicle charging stations, place standards, number five. There's a message about just deleting that, given John's email, I know that's on. Is this something we talked about?
That was.
D five, do we need to even have that in there?
It doesn't hurt.
So it's not to interfere with accessibility requirements, isn't that someone already mandated? Buy the accessibility requirement?
I don't think it hurts that it happened there. I see, I see what you're saying, but I don't think it hurts necessarily to keep that one.
I agree.
Just eliminate that.
Recount.
Just eliminate it.
Just eliminate the John thing.
Yeah, sorry. And that was because the last time you guys had a question about the outlets and connectors found into the viable realm and ADA, and John Bezwick, we asked John Bezwick and Andrea about that. They provided advice. So I wasn't clear on whether we wanted the entire paragraph out or just that first sentence. I chose to just get rid of the first sentence, but I honestly don't care. I think we leave that.
I think we should leave it too.
And I'll get rid of the suggestions.
Any other, do you have any other?
Maybe he'll let him talk about signing the code.
Sean for the property. Sorry, yes, you have a question? All right, so then we are.
So we had the word new. We'll get rid of the reference to John and we'll change the sign of mine to second county, is that what you guys want?
Yes. Someone want to make a motion to send it to county?
I'll make that motion.
I'll say, does this go through the planning commission?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
So they, same motion to go through the next steps.
Yes, through the next steps. Public comment, anybody have a comment on this, yes, Mr. Hall?
Okay, so, of course, I was working with your group earlier and did a bunch of study. And Chris Bayshaw actually corrected my biggest point about touching someone's garage and all of a sudden we get forward to having to do any charging stations. So my understanding is, I think what you said was those types of renovations would not be included in the same.
Correct, that would go through the building permit process.
Good job.
Yes.
So I was trying to find out what was the source of what our sustainability committee, how they were developing this from scratch, but they didn't develop it from scratch, right? This is twenty, twenty-one IBC. Yeah? This is in the twenty-twenty-one IBC, which you're working.
Are you talking about the International Building Code?
Yeah.
I don't think that's, that's not adopted as a statewide building code right now. That's not the statewide building code right now.
Okay, so it's interesting.
Because.
Everything I read in the ordinance is almost paragraph by paragraph, twenty-twenty-one IBC, building code amendments for electric vehicle charging.
Yes, we referred, we referred this to our building code officials for their insight. But the actual ordinance, the framework came from other municipalities who have adopted similar legislation. I think we used, we used Phoenixville and Westchester Borough.
Well, with the SBT, you put a lot more into it, they.
Yes.
We use it as a model as an example, Phoenixville and their own.
Yeah, that's correct.
So all roads lead to the twenty-twenty-one IBC. And that might be document, they want to go back and refer to before approving yours. At the bottom of the document, it says jurisdictions adopting EV provisions and have not adopted the twenty-twenty-one IBC must also amend earlier versions of the International Building Code to renumber sections, fuel dispensing systems, and add the following language to chapter eleven. And I have three pages here that I can go into that. So I guess my point is this, your basis is other townships what they're doing. Somewhere earlier than what they did, somebody started with the twenty-twenty-one IBC, building code amendments for electric vehicle charging. All the tables you have in your ordinance come right from this.
So the tables we have. Can I say something? Yeah.
I think there were tables in your ordinance, I don't have it printed out in front of me. Just look for.
There are no tables. There are no tables.
So just real quick, can I just explain something? So this, they're required to follow the statewide building code. And right now, the statewide building code is not the twenty-twenty-one version of the ICC. Okay, so.
IBC.
IBC, it's International Code Council. So the statewide building code today, I believe, and you can help me, it's the twenty-eighteen version, okay? So we, they are not allowed to adopt any building code other than what the state says is the, is the state building code. Okay? What they're doing is, the, the building code applies to, as Chris was mentioning, like you're going to go build your home, you're going to go build a new garage, you're going to build a shopping center. That's the building components of the building, right? The, where they're putting this, where this is proposed to go is in the subdivision land development ordinance, which, those are defined terms under the state law. And it only applies to basically a commercial building or multiple residential buildings, like a subdivision of twenty homes. So there, the applicability is in two different places. So they're not, if the state does ultimately move forward and every three years they look at it and they analyze whether the Department of Labor and Industry discerns whether or not they should update what's the statewide building code. If that happens and what you're looking at becomes the statewide code, it will automatically be the code in, in West Ocean Township. They won't have any discretion about it. Because they had to opt into the building code. But as far as what they do have discretion on is what they put into their subdivision land development ordinance that applies to developers coming in to develop their property with commercial development or redevelop commercial development. So it's, it's in two different locations, if that makes sense.
No, this makes perfect sense. I get tangled up in this word all the time.
Okay.
It makes perfect sense. I guess the ultimate question then is, if you adopt this ordinance and down the road, the state, let's say adopts this IBC twenty-twenty-one, what happens to your?
We'll have to go back and examine that. And we've talked about that. We've talked about it with the SAC members that this is an ordinance that's going to have to be, you know, examined as the technology changes, as the state codes change, to make sure that we don't have inconsistencies and that they're keeping up with whatever the greatest, you know, the standards are. So they're doing what they think now makes sense from where the technology is and where codes are, but that will be something that will probably change. And that's, that gives them flexibility to make amendments in the future.
So what was surprising when I read this, again, when I was coming in here tonight to probably say for the IBC, is that you're going way beyond, not way beyond, but you're going beyond what the IBC twenty-twenty-one allows you to do. Chris Bayshaw addressed one three. And I didn't see tables in the draft ordinance, then the quantities in the draft ordinance probably exceed the quantities in this IBC twenty-twenty-one.
That, that document that you are holding is not applicable to any part of this discussion.
Well, because we are under the IBC twenty-eighteen.
The twenty-eighteen building code is what is in place.
And I already have, excuse me, I already have my answer. If in fact you adopt IBC twenty-twenty-one someday, then you would go back and take a look at this ordinance.
Would have to, yes.
And in areas where you exceed, say you called for ten spaces or twenty spaces and they only call for ten, you would have to address that.
Again, it's a potential, that you're saying is a building code, which has different applicability than a subdivision land development ordinance does. But just generally speaking, they would go back and look at it for sure.
Yeah.
Also, just a clarification, the code just sets a minimum standard, is that not true? The NFPA seventy-eight table says minimum standard.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We can't exceed it.
All right, any other comments from the board? Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to number eight. So where we are, continued discussion regarding the bid specifications for the installation of solar energy array on the West Ocean Township Public Works Facility, building D. And Kirsten's here.
Hello, hello.
Hello. Welcome back.
Thank you. Thanks for your time tonight, I appreciate it. So tonight, I think we are together, we're all too up to date. So I just want to leave this at some of the comments from the last meeting and then see if there were any other comments. So I'll just jump in with our last comments. So one of the comments that we made last time was including a monitoring system in the water disney and adrenoid to tie into the maintenance and to tie the maintenance system into the local utility. So we did include that, hopefully you saw that, that should be summarized in the summer work specification. And it's also now included in the solar array stack itself. So I guess we can start with that. Any other questions or comments on that, for you there?
Yes, just a few, all right, I have, I have one. We received a comment from a resident inquiring as to whether we're able to have the installer pay for that monitoring system? Is that how it's going to work?
So it's an interesting situation. I know from experience with residential that it is a free software. I don't know if that's true when you get to the commercial level. So with the, the upsizing of the system compared to ours, I definitely don't know if that's still true. But my opinion would be that you would be hard pressed to find somebody who will continue to pay that because it's not a one-time thing, it's an annual renewal. If it is, if there is a fee associated with it. So if you think of it somewhere to like a cell phone plan or something like that, my opinion is that is a legitimate expense for the township to continue on.
So.
You could do it for a year and have them include that in the cost, which is what I am proposing, that they pay for that one-year subscription upfront. And if you like it or if you don't like it, you can make the decision from there after that first time.
Okay, where would the monitoring be coming from? Because we talked about how the, is it the inverters?
Yes.
They're going to be located in the other building, right? And then you're going to have to get that information to, I guess if you wanted this in the administration building?
Right.
So what, like, how's that work? What's happening?
So basically, locally at building D, you would have a local monitoring system which would display general information. It wouldn't give you the nice charts and graphs and all of that stuff that people ultimately see in the actual building. It'll probably give you something like a general power monitor, which is basically voltage on the AC and DC end of things, also water and possibly air fridge. And if there's any loss of phase or anything like that, it would indicate all of that on that screen. But it's not going to give you the display that people ultimately want for the public. So that's where that cloud service comes into play, that's that additional cost. So the local display in building D will have the capability to connect via internet and also hardwired to the monitoring system that you have in the, like I'll call the building automation system that couple of the other there. So that would all be without that cloud-based system. You would be okay to do that. But the internet connection allows you that access to the cloud-based system, which would then allow you to just connect via internet over here with a VPN tunnel and just like.
Have the live sort of feed from this.
Yeah, so that's kind of like the nice to have piece. Whereas you really should have the, the general monitor of the inventory anyway.
Questions?
Yes, my question on that would be, and I think Charlie raised this in an email. I would like to see us break that out as an option cost. Because I do want to make sure that we understand what the cost is to provide that capability and whether we ultimately decide that that's something we should proceed with or not. So I would like the bid to reflect the base bid and then have an option of this system for the admin building.
Okay, specifically for that.
Yeah, I'm not, nothing to do with the monitoring system and the readouts as to how the system's functioning from a, from a systems perspective in D building, just this public-based interface.
Okay.
And the other thing is, as far as size, do we need it that large? Is there something smaller?
Yeah, you definitely don't need it that large, you could do smaller. I wasn't sure what you were considering, but I was just trying to get like a baseline number for the contract because this is a design project.
Right, yeah, I'm just taking a small monitor is all you need. You don't need, you know, those stats in a large profile. So that would probably lower the cost a lot too, I'm sure.
True.
I have a question after you. Who will verify compliance with Article 3 qualification and bitters? And specifically in document 4515, contract responsibility certification formula, is that something that you will do?
Or is Carol and Jerry going to do that?
Both of us.
Charlie?
The two of us will juggle together.
Again, both of you will?
Yes, Kirsten and Carol will work together on that. Carol has experience with that ordinance, so they will be helping us on that. And then as far as the technical, actual know-how of how this system would work, Kirsten will be involved on that. Any other questions on that specific portion, otherwise I'll not want to move on to the next. So then the additional item from last board meeting was provide multiple inverters installed in parallel to add up to the 250 kW total that we want. And so I did change that and address that in the specification, that's the solar specification. You'll now see that as string inverters. And I believe I gave an example of 50 kW units to add up to the 250. So that is just an example. And I just wanted to make it clear to the contractor that they are able to hear from that as long as they combine up to 250.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
You guys agree with that yet?
Yeah.
Awesome. All right, moving on. Require performance guarantee warranties from the contractor. I have filled that into the solar specification as well. There's a section on special warranties. I don't have that necessarily right now, but hopefully you saw it. I believe it was a 10-year warranty that we wrote into that and a 10-year warranty, limited of course. That one was a full coverage 50 and then a 25-year limited warranty. This is typical of industry, so that's where I brought that in.
So what is a performance guarantee?
So they, the work definitely, but they're also required to do a certain percentage of what the actual system says it will output. So there's some language that I wrote into that, which basically says within 1% or 2% of what the system claims to output. So basically you need like a 98% efficient system for those 10 years.
10 years.
And then after that it will drop off, but I think there's a limit on maximum 3% for how much it would drop off to 25 years.
Maximum 3?
I believe it's 3%. I wrote the language into the specification, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, I have.
Yeah.
For 25 years.
For 25 years, which is the length of the system, like that's like the warranty or like that's the claim on the job of the system. Hopefully you'll get more out of that, that would be great.
I must have missed it somewhere, but is there going to be a final inspection by an approved third-party underwriter for the electrical installation? Is that in here?
I don't know. That is a good question, I will have to.
No, that's got to be somewhere, but I must have missed it.
Yeah, I must have missed it too. I mean, it might just be.
You would recommend that.
There's definitely the building code requirement.
Shouldn't that be included in your somewhere?
The building code requirement is included in there. That there is the responsibility to get your corporate building code, or permitting. Yes, 100%. Sorry, I wasn't sure I was understanding the question. Okay, any other questions on performance guarantees and warranties? I don't think so. So I'll move on to the next, which is to include by the way, the Inflation Reduction Act. This is a change from previous where we had a system for the attachment, now we've made it the contractor's responsible.
So just on this one, I think we need, again, go back to the bid requirements. We need to have, to be able to compare bids to one another. So we need to have a base bid that is a minimum of the 30% ITC. And then the option of if we requested, if it was all domestic sourced materials, which gives you the extra 10% rebate, what would the cost be? So a base bid is the minimum, 30%, and then can the bidder, what would the bidder's price be if it was all US domestic content? Because otherwise we won't know what's in that one's individual bid.
Yeah, so the alternate bid would be base bid.
Plus domestic content.
No. Thank you, any additional comments on that particular item? And then one of the final comments was to include the 40K allowance. I had suggested this as a possibility. Just want to see where we fall on this. We didn't make a complete determination on this last time, so I just want to revisit the discussion.
So I still remain opposed to it because it's a design-build contract. We are looking to basically execute with a winning bid return key approach to this, where they're designing it, they're procuring the materials, they're building it, and it's going to work to the requirements that we have. So I don't want to, I don't see the necessity to all that, give them an allowance that says, you put your bid in and then you'll have this kind of $40,000 more, but it's okay. Because either we have to treat every bidder's, whatever the bid is plus $40,000 or we hold them to a number. So I say hold them to the number that we have. Where they're doing the design, they have to meet the cost commitment they have in that bid.
That's a good point. In thinking about it more, and you and I talked about it earlier today, I agree with you that this 44, this allowance that we generally use with municipalities really does typically apply to the design bid build approach. So the engineering does the design upfront and then we're bidding that. So it's basically meant to cover unforeseen conditions. In this particular case, you need to really valid company. The design hasn't happened yet, so.
Yeah, the unforeseen conditions, there's not a lot of, you know, they, this is a roof man, it's a system. We're not digging up the yard and finding all kinds of buried pipes and stuff that they have, they have no, they don't match drawings, whatever else. I think the risk is low and we shouldn't, we shouldn't give them this room.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Because this might be more than 5% of the bid amount.
I mean, that's, that's fine with me. Not including the $40,000.
All right, I will proceed with reading that. And then the final comment was to make sure that we include one here worth of utilities, the structural report that was previously done by Carol, and then the existing building drives as additional information for the bid that will be used on PennBit. So I will definitely make sure to include that and coordinate my press on that to make sure I gather all that information quickly. So those were the last items that I had, any additional comments?
So this reminds us with the expectation of being able to just get this completed now and up on PennBit. What's your timeline for posting on PennBit? And are we still sticking with the February 8th mandatory bid meeting?
Yes, so with this being a little bit delayed as far as approval, we haven't gone to advertise with the daily level yet. So we do need to do that, I am issuing that tomorrow pending approval tonight. And then I intend on posting everything by the 31st of January. I just want to give it a little bit of time that the daily approval gets out and then we're ready to go. So I do want to delay a little bit to the 31st, we already finished, we supposed to post it. So we are at a little bit of a delay. But I don't see any reason why we can't continue to host the three bid on November or on February. That should work just fine. That's another week from when it goes.
So right now, it would have been two weeks' notice before that. So you're going to give them a week, is that really?
Well, I think it's important in the beginning of the stage anyway to come out and see the site. This should be one of the first steps that they do to make sure that they can understand the job. So I think that it's fine, especially given we haven't created drawings, there are a couple of sketches.
Just worry, if you give people a week's notice, they've got calendars full and I'd say, I'm just not going to bother bidding on a job, you know? It'll be a lot of work out there. I've got my calendar's full, I can't change it, I'm not going to bother with this one. If you give someone two weeks' notice, it's my feel. Hey, you, what do you think?
I have, yeah, two weeks.
Two weeks, okay, I can adjust that. If we do adjust that, I would like to propose adjusting the additional remainder of the schedule by a week then. And then we'll have, the bid award can probably still stay for April. That's a month out after my initial notice intended to abort. So we can revisit that, I'll talk with Chris, but I would like to push everything except for hopefully the bid award.
Sounds good.
Any other questions from the board? I know we had some questions from residents that might want to take this opportunity to ask them. Yes, that's right.
Remember we were talking about one-invert versus multiple inverters? It's, we thought maybe multiple inverter was a good idea for backup. Since this is a net metering and it's not, we're not using the power, I don't know if it's that critical to have backup inverters. Is there a big cost savings having one inverter?
The cost would be relatively the same because we don't need too much additional conduit to run between the different ones. Either, either way, all of the solar panels would have to be connected back to that same inverter location, so we don't really expect too much additional cable either. So it really just comes down to what is the actual cost of the inverters versus the big pad mounting. And I don't expect it to be too different.
Okay, and other projects of this size, was it typical making one inverter or multiple?
In discussing with people at my company who have been involved in this before, it is typical that they do multiple inverters.
Okay, for net meter?
Correct, well, for any situation, but they're typically doing a net metering configuration. So they'll typically do at least three inverters and string that together, but it depends on how, what the range of the entire system is. But looking at systems similar in the size 250 kW to 500 kW, it's typically around 3 to 5 inverters. So in this particular case, I was looking at five.
So the inverters are in parallel with each other and then they change with all of the panels?
Correct.
So if one inverter goes down, the same output is generated?
So if one inverter goes down, you would lose that certain array of panels that is connected into that inverter. They don't typically do a backup system. They would have to upside the inverters and basically double the side of the inverters.
To secure capacity. And that's not what we want to do here?
That isn't the intention here. Thank you. Thanks, Matt.
Well, yeah, a couple of things. Lido's already covered in your discussion, so thank you, thank you for letting me know. Sean expressed some concern about, you know, it's going to exceed the budget. There's a pretty good risk out there that it's going to exceed the budget. So I say prepare for it. Couple of good ways to prepare for it. Do we know if it comes in 10%, 20%, 30% more? If the township has the ability to reject all the bids? The idea that you're going to reconsider your ask, you're going to redo proposal again?
Yeah.
Or does the authority enter any project to reject any and all bids?
I think last year's, I think, a little bit, the underground duct or whatever project.
The Baltimore Street project?
Yeah.
But that was also, you also have to take into consideration that was utilizing ARPA funds. There was a significant issue that was there and we didn't, we were under an obligation which to suspend those funds in a certain period of time.
Well, that was a source of misunderstanding. The other thing is, if it comes in higher, doesn't mean that you're necessarily not getting the value you intended to. So I think, I'm hoping it's a typical is when they propose these systems, they're giving you a payback calculation.
That is requested in the, in the specification for this whole design.
Okay, so some of the rules for the payback, so you, when they get those bids back in, you have apples to apples. Is someone giving you a payback calculation that one is 30, because that's the expected life? Or if someone comes in with 40, 50, 60 year life on their panels, not true, but that's your payback calculation? So are you going to even dictate that period?
I will have to revisit and make sure that the language is there, but I believe so.
So maybe I can help with this one, Kirsten. So we were, Nate and myself were at a solo conference run by Chester County Planning last week, and there is a tool available for all schools, municipalities, businesses, whoever to use, a pro forma business case where you input specific, all the parameters that are necessary to come up with a calculation. So we're going to be able to evaluate independently of the feedback received in the bid documents, the actual true business case for this. And the inputs are all across the range from the, all the costs that you have to incur. So the upfront cost, the ongoing operations and maintenance cost, if there's any insurance additional cost. And on the revenue side, you've got, you can play with the SREC values, you can look at your expected cost of a power saved, an inflation factor for that over the 25 years, you can adjust that up and down. So we got this pro forma business tool, we'll be able to use for our own independent evaluation, so.
That's great.
Yeah.
That's great.
And just, just one other point, you mentioned about the cost of the project. So in Q3, Q4 last year, so it's, you know, maybe three to six months old data, the range of costs for a system like this is in the $2 to $3 range. So $3 for the smaller systems on a residential unit and then $2 per kilowatt for a larger scale unit, so not kilowatt per watt. So for our size system, that's in the range of 500,000 to 750,000, our budget is 750. So we might be lucky, we might get bids in the $500,000 to $600,000 range, in which case we'll be within our budget for sure.
That's great, great news. Performance guarantee. If you've noticed when you're reaching to your cars with range, you get that buildup, these panels get built up. They tie their performance guarantee to you cleaning your own panels?
That's a great question, we'll have to find out.
So the fine print in their performance guarantee is something that I'd be interested in.
Yeah, I mean, if there's snow covered, they're not going to be producing.
Well, aside of that, aside of that.
But just clean in general, I guess.
Which is clean in general. Getting acid rain, everything that builds up on your car after it rains is going to build up on those panels. They're going to lose, they're going to lose a percentage or two, like you said, you're going to hold it at 2%. They're going to lose some percentages based on how dirty they are.
I'm into 14 years of mine and the rain cleans my panels.
Right.
And honestly, I've had the best, last two years, the best two years, the 14 year left, I've produced more than they were expected to. I mean, it's a, it is an unknown, but you're probably not going to have a cleaning service.
That's good. Two more things, I'll try to be really quick. I would have tried to buy an EV car, I would have tried to buy your solar panels from her just to see what that experience is like. Biggest thing I got from the solar panel is how old's your roof? You don't want to put a 30-year panel on a roof that only has 20 years left. So how old is our roof? What is the expected duration of the roof? If the metal roof is a 50-year roof, it's been up there 10 or 15 years at this point, maybe even 20. So do they match? The lifespan of the solar panel, the lifespan of the roof?
That building was constructed in 2012, it's a metal roof. It is generally had a long, like, expectancy.
And I would expect this would be covered in the structural report.
Well, maybe not, because it's all about the painted metal roof. So I would ask that the board just take another look at that. Don't put a 30-year panel up on a 15-year roof left.
Yeah, I think that is something that they would have looked at when they were doing the structural report. Because I feel like that's exactly the types of questions that.
And so I feel like that's exactly the kinds of questions that we're gonna be asking. But I agree.
Sure.
Correct.
One last comment, you mentioned snow on the panel. So when I tried to buy the panels, they say, well, in your area, your roof, you get three point some hours a day for charging that. Okay, so you wanna put a forty-eight inch screen in the lobby, but it's only gonna read positive and good news for three or four hours a day. And then for the rest of the time, it's gonna read bad news. And for me, I still link that to the windmills I see as I drive by that aren't spinning. So these panels aren't gonna be charging really to our benefit, to our net benefit, more than three hours, four hours a day. And I don't really wanna monitor showing that.
I guess it depends on what the cost of the monitor is too, and size and all that that we talked about.
That's not true. There's a curve throughout the day when the sun comes up and the panels, I think the panels in Eastbury, it would be a very good orientation. When the sun comes up, you're gonna get a bell curve throughout the day. And it depends on the time of year, like right now in the winter time, because the sun is low in the sky, okay? You don't get the same return. What I can tell you, starting in March through September, you're gonna have a large bell curve. And I think you really want people to see that, because that is really one of the reasons you're doing this. So that encourages other people to move forward maybe with projects like this. Uh, but you will see that, and it's very positive, it's not an error.
And I'll add that, um, when we initially approached this project, we did approach it with a single vendor. They did do a rendition of where they would expect to put the solar panels to capitalize on that, on that march. So it is only on south facing roofs.
Right.
And so that should certainly help with that. Um, and then they calculated that into the payback period. So they included the winter, they included like the, the times and dates that you wouldn't get that peak performance. And they included that in, into that total calculation of payback.
Okay.
Good point, some good questions. Um, all right, so the next step for this is?
Um, motion to authorize.
So I'll make a motion. So I'll make a motion to authorize this be, uh, put upon pen bid with the adjustments that we discussed and Kirsten noted tonight, so.
In a second.
All right. Thank you very much, any comments on the motion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Kirsten, thank you so much.
That was a long meeting, I should be sticking around.
Okay.
Okay, now moving on to item number nine. Discussion on possible approval of an amendment to policy five point two of the West Coast Township non-uniform personnel policy. Chris, do you wanna introduce this for us?
Uh, yes, ma'am, uh, yes, ma'am, Chair. Uh, for the board this evening is an adjustment to policy five point two of the township's non-uniform personnel policy. Uh, this amendment defined the township holidays as approved by the board supervisors and have time off associated with approved holidays to be utilized. Uh, the, the policy document was before the board, has been shared with our department heads.
So really the change in this policy was allowing personnel whose holiday falls on a day that they're already not working to be able to take that day, the following day?
Uh, during the pay period, which occurs.
During the pay period, so it's not just the following, it's not that they have to take it the next day?
For certain people, I wanna get them on the next day after the holiday, just kind of line up everything else. But because we have so many departments that work different schedules, it's all within kind of the same pay period.
And it's gonna be kind of up to the department head to move this.
Correct.
Are there any questions from the board?
I just had one, um, under the last sentence on there. Employees who separate from the township plus the one year service will not be paid for any end uses of personal time.
It says unused.
And vacation time not accrued also?
That's in a separate vacation policy.
Okay.
There's a separate policy related to vacation and it follows the exact same guidelines.
Meaning they, they only get paid for what they approve?
If you work less, if you provide one, one, less than one year of service time, you do not get paid for anything.
Okay, so it's another area, but it's still.
Yep, that's in policy five point one.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, is there a motion to approve the amendment to the policy five point two?
I'll make the motion.
I think Sean.
I'll second.
I'll say.
Thanks. Is there any public comment on this motion?
Yeah, I think it's a good change. And also just curious when the administrative offices were closed on the last Sunday, um, do the employees work from home?
Certain employees work from home, but our policy for emergency closure says if the building is closed, they get paid for the day.
What about if, um, it's closed for four hours and they come in, whether it's?
So you get, if I close, under our policy, if I close the building early or open it late, whoever is here gets paid for the full day. That is how the severe weather policy reads.
Okay, and then what determines, um, I understand that's, I guess, your discretion when you would close for inclement weather, like what do you base that on?
The forecast, speaking with our road superintendent, um, if it's severe enough, I'll talk to the chief of police. Um, also monitoring the county and just general judgment. We have employees who drive an hour or less, and I have to take all their safety into consideration.
I just wonder, isn't the fact that there seems, you know, sort of, obviously, I understand it's a big snowstorm, but, you know, the schools, I was just hoping it's not based on the school system, so the school systems are pretty good and close for two, three hours.
Not based on the school system.
In fact, our policy actually says that we may not follow this one system.
Yes.
Chris, for vacation, can employees not have a week, like, put on a year?
Yes, employees are eligible to carry for no more than forty hours of vacation time from here to there.
Okay. I'll take that.
There's just one, one item that I just wanna make sure the board is aware, we distributed this to everybody, they were, you know, they were doing it and asking questions. One thing that did come to my attention was that I did not include a reference to the pension plan. So I did make a clerical change just to reference the existence of the pension plan defined in the document. That's approved under a completely separate policy, separate from this, and it has to be done by ordinance. So it doesn't get changed through this process.
So the manual just references the fact that there is this pension plan?
Correct.
See, I'm gonna ask the board to approve this additional, putting this reference in the document.
It's already in the document, it's already in it. Got missed too.
It just got missed. Yeah, I think. And the, um, the last, the pension plan was last updated, erased, and stated in two thousand nineteen by ordinances, two dash twenty nineteen and three dash twenty nineteen.
All right, there you go. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Item number ten. Discussion on possible approval of a proposal from Final Site to expand the character count in West Coast Township's Blackboard Connect system. So this would essentially be to almost double, I guess, or a little less than double. Um, the character limit that we can use for the Blackboard Connect emergency alert texting that goes out to the community.
That is correct, Madam Chair. Um, the, this came out of the tabletop exercise, that was conducted in February twenty twenty-three. That was where we discovered the, kept the character limit on our Blackboard Connect system. We asked for a proposal from Final Site, who, who owns the system, uh, for a proposal, and the proposal would be, uh, for two thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars, which makes the total cost, annual cost of the service twenty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty-four. Uh, so it would be about three thousand dollars overall, was budgeted, uh, for this service.
We think that it's necessary to have this extended character limit because, why?
That is a question for the board. This was a recommend, this was an action item that came out of the tabletop exercise, so we were getting a proposal for the board's consideration on this.
Well, that was actually my recommendation to all during the tabletop exercise, because when we started mocking a, uh, sample notice out to the public, there wasn't enough characters to get what we needed to get on there that was important information, even though we tried to condense it as best we could. It still wasn't enough to inform the public, and I felt as though they needed more information, and it didn't allow us to do that. We found out during that exercise. Um, and I didn't want to limit the amount of information we were telling the public. So I thought that it was, um, to our advantage to have the maximum we can possibly have, depending on the nature of the event.
Worked out.
Yeah, so I, I agree with Tina, that's what I recall from the exercise that we did, that we would've liked to have had more characters than the one sixteen, it was a limit. And we didn't, we didn't know what to be sending multiple messages out about the same thing. And we thought, yeah, we looked at it and said, if we had up to three hundred, it would cover the needs, so that's why we came up with this request. However, you know, one thing that's on my mind is that this is the kind of system that sits in place for a long time, we never revisit it because it's, you know, twenty other thousand dollars in a nineteen million dollar budget. And, you know, we, now that we've got Civic Plus onboard and the use of Civic, whatever they call to do the online.
Civic Rec.
Civic Rec, and it just seems to me there's an option to consolidate some of our IT needs, if you like, as, maybe we should be looking at some competitive pricing on this. Now, whether it means it's something we do this year and we just approve this tonight and build a couple of systems around here for, for next year, I don't know. But this has just certainly raised to me the idea that maybe there's a, a better value out there for the same functionality.
And I did have a conversation with Linda Rooney from Danieline's Digital about seeing if she knew of anything based on her experience in her work with other municipalities. Civic Plus does offer a, like a free program, free module, that we actually already have, I'll notify me, but that doesn't use a phone function. But they have another program called Civic Ready, which utilizes the similar functions from what Linda was describing to what we already have at Blackboard Connect. So that could be an option that we can put that, look, and I did ask Linda to see if she could get a proposal for us to consider and to just get set up a demo so we can see kind of what's involved in that. But that will be an option, and to Mr. Walsh's point, that would kind of integrate everything with our website.
I agree, I think integrating would be great. I think that's something we should look at this year and find some more competitive pricing and see what other people are offering. How many times will we use, like, how many times have we sent these notifications out, like, within the past year?
My most common notification that we send out is for changes to trash and recycling. And those occur, those occur with the recent snowstorms and also with four designated holidays, um, Memorial Day, Labor Day, Fourth of July, and Christmas, I believe, are the ones that, uh, Thanksgiving and Christmas are the ones that change. So when those get adjusted, we do do a message for the being shifted down a day. Those are the most frequent times we've been sent.
Um, I think we also discussed, um, rather than to have a cost savings and rather than increase the amount of characters, we also discussed maybe just having a link on there, and then that link would go directly to the West Coast Township website and force them to do that. But some, we also discussed that some of the characters in those links are very long, and.
Are they?
Yeah, they can, yes.
They can be.
They can be very long.
But if you put an announcement on the homepage, like if you have one of those pop-up things on the homepage, you just say, go to westcoast.org, that's not long.
No, if you go to, if you wanna put a link to whatever the notification is, like, let's say we put an alert on the website for like a road closure, and we wanna link that into a text message, that link to take you to the website could be long in conjunction with the message to say, please go to the website for a message. If you wanna put the actual link, that'll, you click it, it takes you directly to the website.
There's a lot of characters in some places.
It could, it could be.
Do we wanna chance that?
No, but I'm saying just go to the westcoast.org homepage.
But I think you wanna give a lead-in.
As to what the topic is.
Give a lead-in to the topic, not just go to westcoast.org.
Yes, it's trash, you may not wanna go, if it's an emergency alert, they're probably not gonna wanna go.
I know, I know, you're talking about the characters, anyway.
The total characters combined, the wording and the, the link may exceed what our allowance.
If a desire of the board is to make sure that we're getting the most we can out of this system for the, for like the number of characters and expanding the characters as an action item from the exercise of the year last year, we could do, we could propose this for this year while looking for alternative options. That is one thing that we're worth considering, or we just keep everything status quo.
If we keep it status quo, we're at the twenty-six thousand, I'm sorry.
Twenty-three, seven fifty-two.
Twenty-three, seven.
That's the budget, but what's the actual price that we would pay without the character increase?
Uh, two thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars minus twenty-six, seven fifty-three, so you're already gonna be slightly.
So twenty-four, something, twenty-four.
Yeah.
And why are they increasing the characters to three hundred, certainly more? I mean, just, it just really limits our ability to use Blackboard Connect.
But I'd pay for it now if we're in a year's time, we're moving up to someone else.
That's what I'm saying, just pay for it now and then.
But I would say not pay for it, why do it now? We've never had it, been there for one year.
We may need it this year.
Yeah, but it's a low risk, right? It's a really low risk.
I'm with you, Sean, I, I think it's been functioning the way that it's needed to function, at least for now. Um, if there really is an emergency, I, I mean, I.
Send two messages.
Send two messages, there's, do we have robocalling?
Yes, we do, if there's a call feature, a text feature, and an email feature.
Right, so if people are gonna be getting phone calls, they're gonna, if they're gonna know something's up, they'll go to the website, we have social media. I, I don't think we need to spend the extra money now, especially if we're looking at competitive pricing, so my vote is no on that.
Well, I, I disagree, I think it's, it's, it's a service for the community, a couple thousand dollars, I think it's worth it.
Okay, so are you gonna make a motion then to approve it, Sean? Is that what the action item is?
That would be the action item.
So somebody wanna make a motion to approve it?
I'll make the motion that we pay the, with Blackboard Connect, twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three, to include the increase in the character size.
Okay, and they're second.
I'm gonna second that because I had a lot of concerns in that tabletop exercise. I think if it's trash, if it's something simple, we're okay. But I'm not sure when we're gonna have an emergency, hopefully we don't. But there wasn't enough space for us to really depict what happened in that type of emergency, which is a serious emergency.
Okay. Is there any public comment on the motion on the table?
Would a serious emergency, words, that would come from Chester County, right?
There is ready, Chesco.
It's gonna depend on the situation. If it's localized, if it's localized to the, um, to the township, it would be one of those items where we would take the lead on. But if it's something like an evacuation event, that would go through Ready Chesco. And I believe Chief Breton, we can also utilize like reverse nine-one-one.
If it was an actual emergency, reverse nine-one-one, can, can, this is more for the, not really the emergency, but that you have.
Exactly.
Okay.
Well, I, I've been getting ready Chesco announcements from several townships and boroughs about, uh, not just emergencies closing for snow, but also for road closures too, which I think we could use our Blackboard Connect for that, for that service as well, which would require a larger number of characters to be able to do that.
Yes, Tom.
What's the cost again?
It is.
Twenty, so total twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars, and that includes the two thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars for the expanded character count.
And then what was the cost being for, is this yearly?
Yes.
And then what, is it, is this an increase?
It's a slight increase from last year without the character count. The character count expansion is about a seven hundred dollar increase from last year.
So it's about, you said twenty-five thousand?
Twenty, with the character increase, twenty-six, seven fifty-three, without the character increase, as Mr. Walsh said, about twenty-four.
And we were paying this every year?
Yes.
It works?
Are you signed up, do you get the?
Well, it works, but we passed on the tabletop exercise from last February that has limitations. It allows you to do.
It comes on your cell phone, is that how?
Yes, or however you sign up for it.
Email.
If you signed up to go to your cell, it'll go to your cell, you sign up for emails, it'll be there.
Okay, and how long has township been doing this, uh, service?
It's gone, predates me, it's gone through various iterations, it started as CTY into Blackboard, and now it's on by Final Site. Mike, do you have any idea how long we've been using this? It's been quite some time.
And you know, I, I think of the older population too, when they're trying to maneuver, um, a link and how to get there and in an emergency situation.
Yeah, but in an emergency situation, we're going to have the reverse nine-one-one and other things.
Let's go back to the chief's point, we're using this, and our communication policy puts us on the hook for letting people know, not, ready, you know, the county's saying it's not a big enough emergency for us to be notifying people, it's you, you have the communications policy. That's what came out of the first tabletop exercise. We went through our communications policy exercise, and the example was the Blue Road pump station leak, where we could, we didn't have a policy of how to communicate to the nearby residents and let them know what was going on. It's not really full-scale emergency, this is what it is. And we went through that exercise, we couldn't quite get enough information on a single text. So first of all, it wouldn't be a crisis. Secondly, if you come in, you can do a pretty damn good job. good job with a hundred and fifty characters. If it doesn't quite work, you can always follow up with a second text. So I don't see it as a burning platform to spend another twenty-three hundred dollars. That's my opinion.
Okay. So, share your thoughts.
So there's a, there's some differences on whether we should spend this or not?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So now we're going to vote. All in favor of the vote?
Wait, I'm sorry, I think that you were asking. I don't know. I just don't, I, I don't use it. I'm wondering how many residents are signed up.
We have over sixteen thousand contacts in it.
And that's only because of an aggressive effort that we've made to have people sign up.
I like Sean's idea. It does seem like a kind of exorbitant amount to pay for the service. And I think going out and getting this, seeing what else is available out there this year is definite, whatever you decide. But I don't see the urgency in that personally.
We'll be able to organize with the service. It's just a matter of whether or not we'll be able to increase the capacity of it to better be able to communicate emergencies to our residents.
So Sean's thought is not to pay the extra amount to increase the character count?
Right.
Yes.
But, but they still have to pay service?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
You're not saying eliminate Blackboard Connect. You're saying just don't increase the character count.
And then in the meantime, look at other companies that we can get to for better cost analysis.
We'll put out an RFP for next year.
So if you're not increasing character count, you can still send a thing, right?
You can, but it's limited in what you can do.
But can you send another one?
Yes.
Well, I mean, just an example, the first line of the, of this explanation here, before the board of supervisors, this even is proposal for the final site to expand the, that's ninety characters right there. That's only one line. So it's very lit, it's, that's what the Blackboard Connect criticism that was made by Chester County Department of Emergency Services was, it was just a little bit too limited in its capacity to be able to get out a message when an emergency would occur. And they suggested we would increase our character count to three hundred. So this is what we're considering right now.
Okay. Great.
So I have a motion in a second.
I have a motion in a second. So all in favor of increasing the character count to three hundred characters for the price of two thousand three hundred.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three dollars, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
I'm sorry. That's what it is?
So we're still at one-sixty-five?
But you can still send another, additional?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
So you send one and the other?
Sure.
So we'll annoy people by sending them two texts when they only want one.
Our concerns are people will start ignoring that. If you get too many, I'm going to start ignoring them.
Yes. Okay. Moving on. Item number eleven, reports for December twenty-two and three from Chief Michael.
Still there, chief?
Yeah, and still waiting. So I have two reports for you. Like, one for the month of December twenty-twenty-three, and I'll begin with that. Our department responded one thousand seven hundred and ninety calls for service forty-five, where those were alarms, and three of those were completely valid. We responded to seventy-two accidents, twenty-two of those being reportable accidents, and drove a total of sixteen thousand ten miles. Performed extra traffic enforcement on Danville Road, South Matlock Street, Brighnell East Market, Creek Airport, Blue Road, Westchester Lake, North Fivepoint Road, Spreet Avenue. We conducted our normal monthly trainings, and in addition to that, we did Department of IT's recertification. Officer Barrett attended advanced roadside impairment, advanced roadside impaired driving enforcement. Officer, sorry, Officer Price, Officer Ashen, Officer Pritchett, we attended accident reconstruction training. Officer Graham attended a high impact subdivision class. Sergeant Sedlack, both his range qualifications and his control tactics, which are required yearly. The, we performed twenty-two assists at departments for a total of just over twenty-one hours, and received thirty-six assists from other departments. And in the month of December, there were a total of twelve alarms were responded to, that were in the highest fine count. So there were six or seven violations for the year. I would certainly take questions on the month of December before the month of the year, or I'll go on to the year, whichever you prefer.
Any questions or more? I'm going.
All right. So for the year, the report, we responded to twenty-four thousand eight hundred and thirty-six, thirty-six calls for service, six hundred and six alarms, forty-one were withered valid, seven hundred and seventy-five traffic accidents, two hundred and seventy-six of those were reportable, and we drove a total of two hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred and four miles in the year. And I look at the yearly alarm totals, at the ordinance change in May, it's very hard to interpret a lot of the data in such a short period of time because the first, you know, one, two, and three violations occur heavily in the beginning of the year and not as much at the end of the year. So I don't think looking at it on this one year is going to give us much information, other than the fact that the fine violations are hugely different. This year's total of fine violations, the fine violations from prior to May, again, this is the beginning of the year, there's not as many fines. The total was thirty-four hundred and fifty dollars for this year, thirty-five hundred hours, and the fines for this year in the same time period, or the next time period, where it's a raised fines, forty-six thousand three hundred dollars. Huge difference in fines. The overall number of alarms from last year to this year is two percent increase. Not much of a difference in the overall, the entire year. But it's hard to discern between the beginning and end without another year of happening because it's totally different beginning of the year.
Chief, if you look at the difference between twenty-two and twenty-three in terms of the part-one offenses and the part-two offenses, that was at least a noticeable decline in part-one. Is there any commentary you would have around year-on-year change, or is this within a noise that you've seen over the years of reporting these numbers?
So I, I didn't see anything alarming in either of the sets numbers. There was a big change in the overall larston, but a big change in that one category is there's fifty different calls. Some of the calls we get are scans over the phones that that can increase in two months. We've just got an extra bunch of things, which in the end resulted in no loss.
Yeah.
But they're considered contract. That was the biggest change category. Assaults went down by twenty-five.
The twenty-five on the assaults is, it was a thirty-three percent drop.
Yeah. So.
Is that, could that typically be that, that's the kind of variation from one year to the other you see?
Yes, yes.
Any other questions, Chief?
I just have a question. There was twelve alarms here that were applied by an hour each. Were there any uses for us? I presume they're all commercial properties, these false alarms?
Yeah, there's all the high number alarms we've seen at all.
Has there been any uses for us getting paid those, those alarms?
Some were slower than others, but there hasn't been anything worth going after that.
Okay.
Mr. Walsh, do you have a question?
Oh, yeah, just an observation. So I hear from different people, crime's going up, but I don't feel the crime's going up. Is there a way that, since we're at the end of the year, beginning of the new year, that the township can put out a summary report or, or something again, things change month to month, year to year again?
My folks start, it's our, our stats, our crime stats on our website and everyone.
But I mean, is there a way you can summarize it for the township in, in some way, in a newsletter or posting on our website that says, crime enough, just a little, or crime a gallon, actually?
I don't think that's a good idea.
And that's, that crime run, crime down is.
But I, I kind of understand that as far as, I think, I certainly appreciate your report, but it would be nice to know, uh, the number of police.
That's what I was, I have it.
But, yeah, mine was all, I'd like to include that as part of the.
I understand what you are voting for.
You might want to consider going to the quarterly meeting with the, with the chief every quarter. There's a sit-down if you ask any questions that you possibly want.
Ultimately, when someone comes up to me and says, crime's going up in this township, I'd like to be able to tell them, no, it isn't. But I can't go to all the leads, I can't digest all the stats and come up with that response. So that's why I said, maybe the township can put some of the other township people at ease.
Well, that is important. And if you, if you think that it's something that's important to the residents of this township, to have some kind of update as to, you know, how safe it is here, I, I mean, I, I don't know. That's something that we can talk about. How do you do that?
But I'm thinking, yeah, police officers, the road last night, I mean, what's it, what they, or they're any, or they're ready for park raiding, so we need, uh.
Not enough if you go put a figure on whether they're going up or down. I don't speak for Mike, because there's so many different categories. I mean, if you look at his list, there's.
I reported change at the heart of our time, so it was.
We did an elder scan presentation of one of the community posted police events. I thought it'd be crowded, but we showed up.
Yeah.
It's just people are tuned out of how to connect, get information. And we could spend a lot of time chasing people down, giving facts, and whatever else, and they still tune in and out. It's very, very difficult to get people to engage in this day and age. We're glad you're here. But you're, you're a different kind of folks because most people are happy doing what they do.
Okay. So let me put it differently. It's an election year. Half the community is going to say crime's out of control. The other half is clueless and doesn't really care and think. So.
I would say Chief Carroll is very accessible, and if people have those concerns, they can put it down and speak with him.
Yeah, we do have community meetings every quarter where we have that discussion, whether any trends going on, any particular crime, and we have that discussion. So people are certainly willing to come to those meetings and buy in.
And the chief does break out the stats at that meeting. So it's, it's a good chart that he shows, and we can look at percentages and increase or decreases somewhat from that. So I encourage you to go. They're good meetings.
I mean, for tonight, I would say if someone asks you that question, makes a statement, direct them to the township police webpage for the stats and information. If they want to talk to someone, call the police department.
I'm going to say it is there, because I didn't wire a couple years ago, and Chief Carroll sent a link against. It's just one of those things, when I'm looking at everything else, it's like.
Yeah, I know, find information.
I've wanted to look at it since the first time I went to it. And I'm like, wow, it's really great. The information, right, is there and it's exactly what I wanted. But I just thought it would be nice to have some of that information. How much longer?
I don't know, we're probably going to. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I have our twelve Board of Supervisors announcements. I will start to my left with.
Prior to becoming a supervisor, I attended the first of three supervisor boot camp training courses. The remaining ones will be in March. On January ninth, John and I met with Mark Baralovi, Street Superintendent, toured building seven facility. On the eighteenth, attended the solar adopters conference put on by the Chester County Environmental and Energy Advisory Board with Sean Walsh. And on the twenty-third, I toured the wastewater treatment plant and met with Mike Mautha.
Thank you. Dana?
Yeah, I only have two items this month since I had surgery and was not able to do much. One of the things that I worked on, I coordinated an effort with my Pinnoch Gym, again, this year to help Dana, gift cards to the residents living in domestic violence shelters. Proud to say that we gathered five hundred and fifteen dollars worth of gift cards, along with the West Ocean Police. On Christmas Eve, we then visited the residents that are currently residing at the domestic violence shelters, where we delivered some of the gift cards and many toys in conjunction with the police. Any additional card, gift cards that we had remaining will be retained by the management there at the shelter to hand out during the year when a resident falls on hard times. So it's been a great effort, I think, to them during the year to help them with. And the other thing I did today, I did speak at the Senior Center on Baltimore Street today, just regarding Chester County and West Chester, West Ocean happenings, that there was concern to keep on top of. So that's it.
John?
On Sunday, December the twenty-fourth, I participated along with Tina in the Santa Gifts for Kids at the Domestic Violence Center, along with members of friends and, and family in the West Ocean Police Department. It's a great event, and they do it every year. And I was glad to be part of it. On Sunday, January the seventh, I attended Engage in Dinner. That's an organization that advocates for the American Muslim community. On Tuesday, January the ninth, I met with Mark Baralovi, along with Nate, he's the superintendent of the Street Department. We had a tour of the streets of the facility. Later that day, I attended the Land Planning Committee meeting and heard proposals from Westchester University for temporary student housing in the, uh, U, uh, two-year C two area. Then on Tuesday, January sixteenth, we had a monthly board liaison meeting with Chief Carroll, along with Tina Marie Spitaline. And on Wednesday, June, January the seventeenth, I met with representatives from Talo Health, Dr. Cosgrove. We met virtually to discuss EMS funding laws. Thursday, January the eighteenth, attended the West Ocean Police Department Committee meeting here at the township building. And then Monday, January the twenty-second, I met with residents about stormwater issues, along with the township's street staff and engineer. That's what I have.
Great. Thanks, John. Sean?
Yeah, just two things. One, as Nate already mentioned, I attended the Chester County Solar Adopters Conference on January, January the eighteenth. It was very informative with relevant presentations. I talked to two likely bidders for our solar array project. You just want to know who's put up on the pen bid, so I'll let them know the date for that. And as I mentioned earlier, there's a, a, a solar project financial pro forma model that's been made available to do all the business case analysis for anyone interested in looking at whether a project would work for them. So we'll avail ourselves of that. We had a pension committee meeting this morning to review the pension fund performance for Q four twenty-twenty-three and discuss the process to use to replace Vanguard as the investment advisor. So in the fourth quarter, we were informed by Vanguard that they will no longer be performing investment advisory services to municipal pension funds. I mentioned this to the board at one of the previous meetings. So since that's the case, we now need to move forward with an RFP to solicit bids. And I'm asking the board tonight to authorize Chris to proceed with issuing that RFP next week to start the process of getting a UIA onboard with the target to selecting a provider by the end of March and complete a transitional high made, which would be within the timeframe of the end of Vanguard's accord. So if that's okay with the board, we can direct Chris to proceed with that.
We can do that.
Yep.
That's a good question on that.
Sure.
That's really interesting. So does that mean all the, the money and the funds will be Vanguard, or just your investment advisor will be changing?
So if we swap the investment advisor, they're going to transfer the funds to their platform, and it will be, you know, managed by them going forward.
And of course, I thought you were going to say they were, will no longer be investing funds for governments of a certain size. So they're getting rid of all municipal pension plans?
Yes.
All public, all public pension plans. They will no longer offer investment advisory services. They've sold the business to a company called Mercer. Mercer does not provide that service to public pension plans. And the, the interesting reason probably is because it's low margin for them, and they don't make enough money. And like all businesses, they want to find a higher profit margin, which is the individual investment.
You know, are the companies involved in transferring their funds?
No.
It's interesting, you said that you were having personal problems with Vanguard.
And that's what I was asking too, because I've heard on business news channels and stuff, people talking about Vanguard's having a problem.
Okay. Any other questions? Are you finished, John?
Okay. I just have a couple of things to announce. I don't know if we ever announced our executive session that we met in, on December twenty-first. I don't know if we have announced it at the last meeting.
No.
So we, we, the board met on December twenty-first, an executive session to discuss legal matters. We also met on the ninth, to, on January ninth, to discuss personnel matters. And we had our monthly meeting with township manager on the nineteenth to discuss personnel legal matters as well. I also attended the land planning committee meeting, the police community meeting, and we have an upcoming conditional use hearing on January thirtieth at six PM for the Wawa conditional use hearing. And I submitted our Tree City application today. And I'm also waiting to submit the growth award for that too. So, across your fingers, that's all I have. Moving on to item number thirteen, township.
Moving on to item number thirteen, Township Manager's announcements.
Madam Chair, I have a few announcements. First and foremost, I would like to thank all the members of our Public Works Department and our Police Department for all their work during the recent storm. We had a recent storm, a variety of road closures and other issues that everybody had to attend, so my thank you to your current, thank you to Public Works Department for everything.
Good, good.
Yes.
They did an outstanding job over the last three weeks.
We had on January twenty-second, myself, during the cloudbag, we participated in a kickoff meeting for our grant with DCR, for the improvements of Community Park. At Community Park, I talked to, actually spoke to Chris Peterson today about this project, so we are looking to, he is going to update his proposal that he had given in twenty twenty-two to be presented to the board to finish the design for this, and put the first phase of the basketball courts and the tennis courts out to bid, so that we can get those done as soon as possible, because those are the two items in our budget. And then we did talk to them about applying for additional funds for the second phase, so we can go ahead and do that, so there will be a resolution coming further down for, for the board to authorize submission of that grant application. We receive, I received all the, the forms for volunteer service tax credit from the fire EMS companies by the January fifteenth deadline, so I am reviewing those with the hope to present those to the board at the February sixth meeting for approval. And I will tell you that, at least with the Westchester Fire Department, the number of people who are eligible to participate has gone up from previous years, which tells you that the program is working.
Wow.
See, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I think there were twenty, there were fifteen last year, I think there were twenty-seven this year, I want to say, so it has worked.
A lot of all the members, actually members that kind of fall to the waistline, back from the back.
How did you get the word out to your community that this was being offered?
Just word of mouth.
Just word of mouth, that was enough.
Yeah, that's very positive. And we're also contributing, we're working for the county pastor program too, so that's very, very generous as well.
We have, when Mark emailed me, first he said, I'm filling out the hundred eighty-two form, and I was like, wait a second, hundred eighty-two? No, that's the, that's the act that's under, so. So, no, there were twenty, there were twenty-seven, at least on Westchester Fire Departments, so the program is working. But like I said, my plans to present those at the February sixth meeting for the approval. And then finally, as it relates to projects, I also spoke with Chris about the North Hills project, as the board recalled, we received four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in grant funding from the state, so Chris is preparing a proposal to do the, the design and bidding services, that will, that will be before the board on February sixth.
Right.
So that is forthcoming, and those are all the announcements I have this evening.
Thank you. All right, item fourteen, Township Engineer Announcements and Gration Update, Brian.
I just have a couple of things that I've graced up, we have not received any update on the punch list that we're shooting in October, so we're still in the hands of developer. I know they're currently building phase five, phase six, I anticipate getting that application this year, to be the last phase, but I have not gotten anything from the developer about what they see in phase six. Stormwater announcements, we're currently working on the, our renewal of our MS four permit, the application is due the first week of March for a permit which expires in September, so Emily and I are currently working on that, so we'll have that done in the middle of, beginning to the middle of February for submission. And also, we are working on our five-year report, there's now a five-year report that's due in the fifth year, or, so you do an annual report, you do, now there's a five-year report with the fifth year of our permit, which is, we're still under due September, and then we also have the annual report that's due as well this year. Three different things to do, do you do for that this year?
Is it a five-year?
Permit, the permit expires in September this year. So that's why we have submitted a hundred eighty-eight, so that's. And additionally, we're working with Carroll Engineering to identify and scope the Westtown Way, Stream Bank, Stream Bank buffer project, once we can work out the, with us at the project, I'm going to be requesting proposals from both Carroll and from the engineering to do pitching for that project. It's currently in your PRP, we just need to better identify the scope of the way of the project, and once in the PRP, if we don't be fair, those proposals to the board will be in February to, to that project.
Is that something we should have the SEC look at too?
I don't.
This is, this is for the MS four part.
Okay.
This is an MS four for the PRP.
Buffer for the MS four, I think, okay.
This is not something that we, we have to do it, it's a full plan, so we'll get the credit for it.
Thanks, Brian. Any questions for Brian? Item fifteen, zoning officers announcements, Shelby.
Hi, um, in the last week I've been here, I've kind of hit the ground running. Brian and I have been working on four land development applications.
Board now?
Four land development applications, there are two zoning hearing, board hearings for February twenty-sixth that I've begun reviewing, as well as working on code inspections on various zoning permits that have gone through, so just kind of going, going off from it, so.
Great. Good to hear. Any questions for Shelby?
It's my only opportunity, uh, getting back to the IBC twenty eighteen, IBC twenty twenty-one, I see you laboring over definitions of things. In the IBC twenty twenty-one, R two oh two, it has all those definitions that you might want to gravitate towards word for word, instead of looking at your own definitions and trying to make them better or different.
So what are you referring to in particular? Like what definition?
Whatever you discuss, a definition in your ordinance.
Depends on what chapter it's in now, depending if it's building, or subdivision, or zoning, so depending on the context.
I'm sorry, we're talking about EV cars tonight, you're looking at your ordinance, you're talking about each word of the definitions.
Yeah.
Or they're already done in, in IBC twenty twenty.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item sixteen, which is approval of the December fifth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes. Any questions or comments on the minutes from the board, or corrections?
Let's have a couple typos on page five. Fifth paragraph, um, uh, missed, uh. Fourth paragraph up to the bottom, there's a double verb there, says, Mr. Wall stated that he believes, that he believes, and just eliminate the second, and then he believes. So it should be, Mr. Wall stated that he believes that the township is raising point and so forth, but just a double verb.
Yeah.
And then on the, that same page, on the fifth paragraph down, change the word till to still, so that it should be, Mr. Bechal stated that the funds haven't secured, and Pico is still the electrical, electricity distributor of the township. That's it, that's all I have.
Correct, Mr. Ogier. Is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes from December fifth, twenty twenty-three?
I'll make the vote.
I think so. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Please, Tina. Any public comments or questions on the minutes? Are there none? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And item seventeen, approval of the Treasurers' Report dated December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three for the General Fund, the Sewer Revenue Fund, the Waste and Recycling Fund, and the Capital Reserve Fund, those who paid from these funds.
So can we see a review by now, so it's a eradication?
Yes, we did, we did, this will be eradication, that's right, thank you.
Madam Chair, one thing I would just like to point out is Christine did provide a breakdown for the CD purchase summary, so these are levels, page twelve, they are eleven-month CDs, she did not do anything with Santander because the rates for the CDs were actually lower than what we're getting on our general bank accounts with them, but we were able to lock in rates between, with Pliggett and TD Bank, between four point seven two percent and five point three nine percent, which will generate some additional revenue, and the rationale behind that was the Fed, the Federal Reserve is probably going to be reducing rates at some point this year, so we wanted to capitalize on the current market.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Have all those funds been invested now?
Yes, yes, they have, Christine completed that, I'm going to say a week or ten days ago.
Okay.
I just have two questions relative to the Do's list for BOs meeting, page one, sixteen, twenty-four on page one. This could be, I don't know, duplicate, or there are two movies, are there two transactions for three seventy-five? I just want to make sure they're two separate movies and not paid twice.
Nate, I believe there are two separate movies that we paid for license for the movies.
Okay, and then the only other question I had was on page, what were pages? Let's see, one, two, three, four, page four. There's false alarm fees for Goshen Fire for seven thousand five sixty, and then there's a same false alarm fees for Westchester Volunteer for six thousand oh two, oh, let's see, on the alarm fees.
Those are the distribution of false alarm fees that are collected by the township and then distributed to the responding agency.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I had.
Okay, any questions from the public on the bills, do you need?
Uh, it's just a few, there's just two, I have too many of your notes to ask them all, but these are the ones that just stuck out to me, and it's scanned anyhow. The Timothy's Christmas practice, do guests or participants, do they pay for that, or is that all of the town?
They do, right. Five dollars per person.
Okay, serious. And then Capital Enterprises, there was a fifty-seven dollar overpayment, do you know what that was for?
That was money that was big, were billed for professional services, and they overpaid by that, they paid the wrong amount, so we had to repay them for that, for that balance.
Oh, okay, and then the four F one fifties, were some of those a carrier for the last year, or was that, I'm just curious, what departments those were?
They were, I believe those were for the Parks Department, yes, they were carried for, we had had significant issues securing trucks.
Yes, and then the gift cards, did all employees save a card, or just?
Every employee.
Um, this other student commenter said to me, I guess it were eighty-seven, if I look at the, the charges on the country report, it comes out to like forty-three fifty, so combined by whatever, and it only came out to eighty-four, eighty-seven, whatever it is.
I gave everything to the department heads, they submitted a list to me, and that was when I purchased it, and the amount that was purchased was within the budget of five thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's fine, I was wondering, and there's a hundred employees, it would have been a bit five hundred dollars.
It should have been, I, it should have been, I purchased them myself and calculated them, and it came out to the total number of employees that we have with the township.
Do you see what I'm saying, when, when I add up the charge report accounts?
You're saying that not every employee received a gift card?
Right, correct.
I don't.
That is not true.
Yeah, no, I, how many employees do we have here?
Roughly a hundred.
Hundred.
I went off of lists that were given to me by the department heads, they also could have been charged to different accounts.
Okay. I think we would have heard if someone stepped.
Yes, I would have heard. I mean, that we have.
And we would have corrected it.
I have not heard that from anybody.
Yeah, but thanks, Marty. Okay, that's all for tonight, is there a motion to adjourn?
Well, we need a motion, we should, we need a motion to.
I'll make a motion to ratify the postpaid and treasures report.
Well, so you've heard the minutes, we need the treasures report.
I'm sorry.
I'll just make a motion to approve the postpaid, or ratify the.
Ratify, yes, is there a second?
I have a second.
All right, thanks, Nate. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion.
Okay, thanks, John. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Charlie. You have a minute?